Mayor Pro Tim is here currently and I'm gonna ask one of the current council members to bring the meeting to order.
Thank you, Clerk Adams. Today is Tuesday, March 8th. The time is now four oh four PM. Can you please call our work session to order?
Yes, I'll proceed with the roll call as listed on the agenda. Mayor, the Hon. Khalid Kamau is not present. The Hon. Catherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
The Hon. Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Hon. Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Hon. J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Hon. Cory Henry, District Five, is not present yet. The Hon. Natasha Williams, District Six. And the Hon. Mark Baker, District Seven, is not present.
Clerk Adams, I just wanna, for the record, this meeting was supposed to be virtual, but the legislation was vetoed for us to appear in person because we have to take the veto up at the next regular council meeting. Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay, thank you. At this time, can you please call the item, the next item on the agenda, or the first item on the agenda?
Don't know if Pastor Henry is here to...
He's here.
Oh, here he is. Pastor Henry, you can take the microphone and render an invocation, please.
Pastor Henry, the mic isn't on.
Once again, we'd like to say that Chaplain Barbara McKee is going to lead us in our invocation for the evening.
Lord, we come before you at throning this evening. Thanking you for your guidance. Thanking you for all that you've bestowed through our city. We want to remember where we are in the world today, all the crises and the things we hear and see going on. But we know you hold it all in your hand. So now, Lord, we come to the city of South Fulton that we thank you for. We thank you for our council. And, Lord, we thank you for the citizens. We thank you for our first responders, Lord. Now, Lord, tonight, we ask that you come into our meeting, lead our council to guide with integrity and wisdom so that our city will be blessed. And we continue to ask that you cover us by your blood because things could be happening right here, but it's because of your mercy. And we thank you for our police department, even down, I know I said first responders, but a special blessing, Lord, and covering them as they go out, our firefighters and our citizens. So this may be the best city to live in these United States, and it's in your name we pray. Amen. You may be seated.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, can you please call the next item on the agenda?
The next item is the first monthly report for this evening. It will be the finance monthly report delivered by Karen Slaton Dixon, who serves as the finance director. Ms. Dixon?
Ms. Dixon? Is she here?
She's coming down.
Okay. Can we go to the next item on the agenda and give Ms. Dixon a little time to set up?
The next item was the city attorney's monthly report. Vincent Hyman, City Attorney.
Attorney Hyman, is everything you need to cover with us should be covered in executive session?
That is correct.
Okay, can we call the next item on the agenda, please?
The next item is item four. It's Public Advocate Monthly Report. Jill Lindsay, interim public advocate.
Clerk Adams, the mayor is walking in. Let the record reflect, the time is ten after four, and I will turn over the chair. The presi- president of the meeting to the mayor.
Thank you. So noted.
Good afternoon, Mayor Khalid and council and the citizens of South Fulton. Brief introduction about myself. Resident since '06, adopting of the Cedar Road and Old National. I have a nonprofit, Gold Green Communities. I'm the vice president of Feeding GA Families, the Old National Merchants Association. I'm a board member. And I'm a board member of the Fulton County Commission of Elder Affairs. My background is I worked with the city of Las Vegas in Clark County and the state of Nevada. Next slide. As a public advocate, interim public advocate for the city of South Fulton, I'm not sure if all the citizens of South Fulton know the process of filing complaints and issues that they have. But on this, on this slide, we're trying to get all the citizens to understand that you can, you have, where you can call the hotline on this slide. You can also put your request in, see, click fix. Whereas you can take a photo of an item that you see, it maps out the address, and you can send that to the city. Make sure you put in your addre- I mean, your email address and your phone number so when they, when you submit it, you'll have a reference number to reference back. When you have done all those things and you don't have a resolution, you can now call the public advocate office. And if they have not responded to you in a timely manner, then what we'll do is we'll go and assess the problem and find out what happened. Next slide. This is our contact information.
Yes.
If you wanna screenshot or write it down.
Point of order, Mayor. We can't see or hear public advocate. Can you please have her address the council?
I think right now she's just giving the citizens information to contact the office. After this slide, Ms. Jill, would you mind turning back this way? Thank you.
No problem. The next slide is achievements. I've been here three weeks, and so far, Ace Hardware on Old National received their sign permit on February 24, 2022. The citizens have called in to meet the mayor, so we created Mayor Mondays on February 28, 2022. The citizens also called to adopt a road. We have three new adopters for Budner Ridge to Cascade Palmetto, Cascade Road from Kimberly to Fulton Industrial, and Cascade Parkway and Creole Road. If you have any other questions, you can email me or call me, or you can see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Go ahead, sound the next item. I'm sorry, did anyone have any questions? District One, District Two, District Three?
Yes. So, thank you for that, Ms. Lindsay. I just wanna, and you typically do it, I just wanna remind you whenever we are having constituents call in, can you please let the council persons know, because sometimes we could be already working on issues. And I just, you know, we found out with one issue that we both were working on it, and I just wanna make sure we're working as efficiently as possible. But, but you typically do it, I just wanna remind you, and thank you so much for your service.
District Four? District Six? District Seven? All right, would you sound the next item, please?
Mr. Mayor, we had skipped over the finance director's report. I do have that queued up, and Ms. Dixon, are you ready?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I'd like to present today our financial report as of January 31st, 2022. Go to the first slide. Here, we can see where we've actually collected ninety percent of our projected property tax, which includes about $212,835 in prior year taxes. And so we're still showing a collection of one hundred and one percent in, um, in other taxes, which include insurance premium tax and alcohol beverage excise tax.
Yeah, it's going blank. Just give me one second.
Do you want me to wait, Mayor, or just keep on going?
We'll, we'll suspend the clock so you can... We have several people watching online, so we wanna make sure that they can see what we see.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And so we've collected eighty-six percent of the IGA fire agreement with the city and the city of Atlanta, which includes payments on the IGA for the fire services. Overall, we've collected fifty-nine percent of our projected revenue. Go to the next slide for me. Okay, on our summary of expenditures as of January 31st, we're showing eighteen percent of our budgeted funds have been spent. Go to the next one. And so on our general fund, year-to-date tax revenues, we're showing a collection rate of eighty-eight point fifty-six percent, with eighty-five percent of that being from our real estate tax. And looking at what we bill for 2021, we're about $3.7 million from what we actually build out. Go to the next one. And on here, we have our general fund year-to-date local option sales tax, which is loss. We're showing a collection of sixteen point four percent over this time from fiscal year '21 budget with an overall collection rate of eighty-two point forty-six percent as of January 31st. And on the next slide, we have the general fund year-to-date T-SPOS. We're showing a collection of eleven point eighty-one percent over this time in fiscal year '21 with an overall collection rate of forty point forty-four. And on this slide here, this is just showing our general fund summary of expenditures, which we saw on slide three. And this just shows you by department what has been spent in our bar chart or back.
Are we supposed to read that?
And the next one. And so this one here, this is just a summary of our revenues and expenditure for all of the funds as of January 31st. And on this slide, we have our cash balance report as of January 31st. So this shows that we have one hundred and sixty-five point five million dollars, and that's spread over various accounts. And on our last slide here, this is our confiscated asset. And this shows a balance of $268,370 with $12,723 coming in from cash that was confiscated. And, and I know that the council had asked about an update on our ARP funds. And so I just wanna let you know that as of today, we've spent about $15,000 that was on some turkey, purchasing some turkeys back in November. We spent $100,000 toward the vaccine incentive program, which gift cards were actually purchased. And staff is currently meeting at least once a month on that project because those funds have to be spent by the end of December 2026. And it is time to take some questions.
All right, District One? District Two?
What was that number again that we spent on the COVID vaccines?
$100,000.
Okay, thank you.
District Three?
Yes, so in an effort to continue to address food insecurity, we did allocate monies to assist some of the organizations that was helping us. So an RP went, RFP went out, and the Atlanta Community Food Bank. We approved for them to get $100,000 to continue to assist residents in the city of South Fulton to address food insecurity.
of South Fulton to address food insecurity. Ms., um, uh, Dixon, when will that? We had a meeting, um, Councilmember Sebastian, uh, Councilmember Williams and I are working on the distributions throughout the city. Do you know when that funding will be expended to them because they said they haven't gotten it yet?
And I'll get with the purchasing manager, Mr. Kerr, to ensure that we get that done as soon as possible.
Okay, they got the letter saying we voted and approved it, but they just haven't gotten the funding.
Okay, I'll ensure we take care of that right away.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon.
District four.
Well, just to add to that, we, um, I think we tend to be talking about the first program in April, so we'll just like to be notified when the disbursement have been made. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
District five? I'm sorry, district six? District seven? Uh, I do have a couple of questions. The T-SPOS, when does that end? Does, does that not end this May?
I believe it is. Correct me if I'm wrong, um, City Manager. Ten minutes, I believe it does, but I'll go check.
I think so. Um, Mr. Valenzuela, is he here yet?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. That's correct.
And, and are we on track to collect as much revenue as was projected? Do we have a projected to actual for the T-SPOS?
I'll get that number for you and get it sent to you tomorrow.
All right. Um, and yeah, we, if we could, and then just have it for next month because then I do want to ask, uh, Mr. Antonio, our Public Works Director, uh, what that means for our project list for that first five years. Uh, Dr. Ral, district one.
Um, I have a general question and, and I don't know if it should be you or, uh, Chief, but, or somebody who could represent his, um, office. For the confiscated funds, you know, we still have a number of issues around dumping and all that. I wanted to know, um, what stipulations are around those confiscated funds that are sitting in that account?
I'm not sure if the chief is here, but.
I think that deputy, I thought, I thought I saw her. Here she is.
Captain, you can't use that for that. It can't be used for that.
I asked her to clear that. Okay, that's fine.
Good question again, ma'am.
Um, in terms of the confiscated funds amount, I think it's like two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand she reported.
Yes.
And so you have that. Can you speak to what those funds can be used for?
Well, the funds are still have not been allocated to the city. Um, they were alloc, uh, confiscated, but it hasn't been allocated. We've been having an issue, um, with the federal with the DANS number. So once we're, we have paperwork in to get the DANS number settled and then the funds will be, uh, released to the city.
Okay, so the only thing that we have in hand now is the twelve thousand?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Willis?
So we took a class on confiscated funds and, um, Councilmember Ral, confiscated funds, assets, uh, asset forfeitures cannot be used for that purpose. They can only be used for public safety training. Those are restricted funds and, um, Attorney Heimich can best speak to that, but they, um, and I took a class at National League of Cities, they can only be used for public safety training, um, and public safety needs. And even of those, uh, public safety expenditures, you still have certain restrictions that can be used towards public safety.
Okay. Uh, just to follow up, uh, given that, and I know we'll get it at some point similar to you've done with ARP, can you give us a plan for when this money comes in the city based on some of the concerns we've heard and that meet the guidelines?
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
All right. All hearts and minds are clear. Would you sound the next item, Mr. Kerr?
Next item is item five. This is City Manager's monthly report. Tammy Sattler Jones, City Manager.
Thank you. Good eve, well, afternoon to everyone. Tammy Sattler Jones, uh, City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council and citizens of South Fulton. Uh, the first thing I wanted to talk about was the Public Safety Housing Allowance Program. Um, on September fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, City Council adopted the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget, which included an allocation of ninety thousand dollars for implementation and rollout of the Public Safety Housing Allowance Program. Um, I'm proud to announce, uh, that we launched that particular program on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. And of course, the program is designed to encourage residency within the city of South Fulton and offering housing assistance to twenty-five sworn non-provocationary public safety employees in our police and fire department. The program initially opened to our public safety personnel with the rank of police officer two and pub, and firefighter, but we expanded that to individuals with the rank of sergeant, um, in the police and fire department. And I'm happy to say that as of today, um, out of those twenty-five spots, uh, we have twenty-one of those spots that have been filled. And of course, we are continuing to accept applications, so encourage our public safety employees to continue to apply. Um, on the subject of public safety, I did want to give an update on the, uh, Public Safety Grant. We are continuing to keep an eye out on that particular grant. Um, in September of twenty-twenty-one, you know, the governor announced a thousand-dollar pay supplement for eligible sworn law enforcement officials and first responders in Georgia. As a local government, we were responsible for applying for that grant and of course, we would be eligible for, uh, distributing those funds. As of today, March the eighth, our payment status is decision in progress. Um, staff, we will continue to check on the progress and provide updates to the Mayor and Council and our public safety staff, um, as our status changes. Uh, rental and mortgage assistance program, staff is working on a formal solicitation for the administration of the rental and mortgage assistance funds, uh, that are going to be funded through the American Rescue Plan. We allocated one-point-four million dollars and then also through Fulton County CDBG COVID-nineteen, uh, the third funds, uh, that's in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand. In order to provide for these funds, the city must follow our procurement process. Uh, so staff is diligently working to roll, um, that out. And of course, we know that citizens are in need of these particular funds, so we will continue to do what we can to expedite this process. But again, we have to go through our procurement. Um, on the subject of the vaccination, uh, cards, um, in February, staff began planning the vaccination incentive rollout in partnership with Core. Uh, the first event will take place on March the twenty-third and twenty-fourth from nine a.m. to four p.m. at the Village Shops at Cedar Grove, which is located at sixty-five-hundred Len Mark Way, Fairburn, Georgia, three-zero-two-one-three. Pfizer, Moderna, and J and J vaccines and boosters will be available to both adults and children where applicable. Um, we encourage you to visit the website, FultonVaxCoreResponse.org. And I know that's a lot, so we will make sure we push this out to the public. Um, to register, registration is required and the first one-hundred people vaccinated will receive a one-hundred-dollar gift card. And that's the gift cards, uh, that we have purchased through the American Rescue Plan money. Proof of South Fulton residency is required and staff will continue to work with the council to identify locations and dates within your respective districts. And then the other thing, I just wanted to remind the public that our regular city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, April the twenty-sixth, and Wednesday, May the twenty-fifth, will be held at the Southwest Arts Center. And then the work session and zoning public hearing meetings will be scheduled for Wednesday, April thirteenth, and Tuesday, May the tenth, uh, will be held tentatively here in Burdette Gym if the council so chooses to proceed at this location. So with that, Mayor, um, any questions for me?
District one.
Uh, one of the things that I think would be helpful, just a request, um, you know, we're getting, uh, pretty timely information on the COVID, um, vaccination or, um, transmission rates in our city. I think it would be helpful to the public to have some of that information. Um, you know, that data is really informing us moving forward. We're rolling out these vaccination sites throughout our city. Um, I would just ask that you work with the communications department because while it's declining in some areas, our rates are high in certain sections of the city. And I think if people understood that, they have a better context for some of the initiatives we're rolling out. So I think, uh, public education on that would be helpful.
District two.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. I just have a few questions. So it is, um, exciting to hear that twenty-one, uh, spots have been filled for public safety. What it actually is the plan to expand or is it, how long is it for? A year and then we open it up, the pool opens up to other, um, public safety officials?
The, the intent was that this was going to be a pilot program. Uh, when the, the information was included in this current year's budget, it was ninety thousand dollars included. So with the demand, if we can reach that twenty-five people, you know, we may be able to come back to the council and say, hey, because of the demand, because of the popularity of this particular project, you know, I may have a recommendation for you. If we don't reach that twenty-five, then maybe the upcoming fiscal year for twenty-twenty-three, we can increase that amount and then open it up possibly to other departments, uh, because we of course would strongly like to encourage all of our employees, if they can, to live within the city limits of South Fulton.
So is it a year program or like ongoing? Okay, so is, if they are part of the twenty-one group right now?
Yes, as long as they remain eligible.
Then it's only for a year and then they have to reapply?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Um, also too, I know we've been talking about the mortgage and rental assistance pretty heavy. Do we at least have an anticipated time? I know we have to go through the RFP process. I know this would have about sixty or so days, but have you all, has the staff set a target date of when they can actually roll this out?
Well, I do not have a target date for you. Typically, these type of RFPs, from my understanding, and I'm not an expert in the RFP field, but, uh, from my understanding and working with Mr. Kerr, I believe we would have to at least do fourteen days. Um, so as soon as we get a date for you, I will make sure that we communicate that to the entire council.
Okay. And my last question with the, um, vaccination event, um, certainly this is a city-sponsored event, correct?
Absolutely. This is ARP funds, so this has to be, um, implemented citywide.
Okay.
Yes.
What is the communications plan to get this out being that March the twenty-third is around the corner? And then also too, um, I know most of the seniors may have gotten their shots already, but there might be a few that haven't. What is the communication strategy for that?
Well, we'll be working with, um, Mr. Leffwich and his team. I know that the fire department is working with them. We'll work with the council person for the first district that we're going to be located at, um, any and all ways that we can. I mean, we would encourage each of you to push it out on your social media platforms. We will be doing the same thing. And typically, these type of events, word of mouth.
Yeah, I think the hundred dollars is definitely, um, a very good thing to get people. Will you tour this around in all of the districts? Is that the plan?
Yes, that's the plan, yes.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gump, district three.
Thank you for your report, Ms. Sattler Jones. Um, I just want, for the record, because there was some confusion around this, um, a lot of the public safety personnel, um, thought that we had the money from the governor, um, in-house. Um, so can you confirm, as you just stated, we don't have that money in-house, but when it does come in-house, because we, um, legislated a resolution to say that we will accept and we approve for that money to be dispersed. It does not have to, we don't have to delay the process and bring it before council for approval. It's already been approved. So once you get it, it can, um, be expensed immediately.
That is correct. Right now, just so, and I'll say it again, as of today, our payment status with the state office is decision in progress.
Okay. Can you please make sure that Chief Jones and Chief Meadows, uh, type up or you type up some type of memo for them to distribute to their employees so that they are aware the current status of that, um, of that bonus at the, at this time?
Sure, we can do that.
Okay. Also for the, um, housing assistance, is there a way that we are going to make sure that we are not, that some residents aren't double-dipping? Because I know the county did this and they have helped, you know, their criteria is to help everyone in Fulton County with the exception of Atlanta, because Atlanta got their own, um, funding source to help their residents. So therefore, they were only, um, mandated to help the fourteen cities. How can we make sure that we are not helping, or we're not helping, but we're not giving the same pool of, um, resources to people who have already got mortgage assistance from Fulton County?
It's, it's my understanding that the county does have a system in place that prohibits that because unfortunately, we do know that people will try anything. So we will be putting forth every effort to work with them through the system that they have, uh, to make sure that people do not double-dip. And I mean, regarding, uh, eligibility and things like that, we have been, uh, trying to do our very best, you know, when we do begin to roll out this process to make sure we're working with a vendor, uh, that can assist us in, uh, as much as possible prohibiting that from happening.
Okay, if you can, just make sure that we are doing that because we want to make sure these resources get to as many people as possible. Um, the last question I have is, uh, when is the RFQ reference for qualification going out for the food insecurity?
I don't have an answer to that question now, but I can get with our staff. I know he's been working on the award for the RFP we just did, um, and he has reached out to you all regarding some potential vendors that may be interested in being on our RFQ list, but we can get a date, um, as soon as possible. I'll get that from Mr. Kerr.
Okay, and, and, and because we have more funding coming, can you please, uh, if you need to bring a recommendation to council to add to that? Because I know we only added, we only allocated two-hundred thousand. I think it's going to need more, but, um, if you could bring that recommendation to the council, um, that would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
District four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Manager, just wanted to thank you and the, um, Fire Chief and Police Chief who is accommodating us as well for arranging vaccination event and also, um, my Ellis to work in that with staff to get it done and schedule for the twenty-third. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian, district five, Councilman Mayor Potem Reeves.
No, you gotta press the button. There you go. Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Clerk, the record showed that, uh, Councilman Correa Reeves is present to the constituency. I am sincerely apologetic and sorry for my tardiness. Please forgive me. Uh, Madam City Manager, has the vendor for the funds for the, uh, housing relief, have that, uh, they already been selected?
For the housing relief?
Yes.
For the ARP funds?
Yes, ma'am.
No, sir. We are, we will, we will need to do an RFP for that process.
Okay. And how long is that process approximately?
Yeah, that, I was, the question was asked of me and I'll, I'll find out when do we, uh, can we, when we can begin that process. I'm sorry, I don't, don't have that with me at this time.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor Potem Reeves, district six, Councilwoman Williams.
No, thank you.
District seven, Dr. Baker. All right, uh, I have a couple of questions first. Uh, just, just to be clear, Madam City Manager, are, um, were you saying that you will be bringing back for the FY twenty-three budget an expansion of this, um, home buying program from public safety to all city personnel?
Yes. The intention is to, hopefully, we want all twenty-five spots to be filled. You know, we have twenty-one right now. I would like to be able during the fiscal year budget when we begin to do preparations for twenty- for '23, to be able to expand this out to other departments and other employees.
Thank you. I, I agree with Councilwoman Gumps. I would like to see that expanded particularly for our parks and recs staff, those people who work with our young people. They also happen to be the lowest paid people in the city, or some of the lowest paid people in the city, so I want to make sure that they can get affordable housing. The business licenses, we are down now, I think, to 10 days? Or do you know what our, where we are, about how long? Where are we with the business license backlog?
Were you talking about permits?
Permits, yes.
Yeah. Let me have Ms. Rebecca Kiefer come up. She's our interim director of planning and development. Thank you, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. So starting March 1st, we instituted a 10-business-day turnaround time for permits. We are still working on some that are hanging out there, so if any members of the audience or development community have issues, please feel free to reach out to me. But that is our commitment moving forward, is that 10-business-day turnaround period.
Thank you. I do have one follow-up question. You heard, if you, if you've got a business permit question, we have someone here. We've had a couple of people call, and we've been looking at Sages in our, in the mayor's office. You can't look a business up by their EIN number in Sages. Is that a change that we could get programmed in, or?
So that's something I think the finance department is looking into with Sages, to see if that's a possibility.
Awesome. And that, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. So two more questions, Madam City Manager. The, at the last council meeting, we, or the last work session, we had a presentation about an operational audit. We had multiple audit presentations, but it seemed like there might have been some consensus around an operational audit. What would you need from us, if anything, to do an RFP? Is that, would we just go with Malden and Jenkins, since there are auditors? Or like, what would be the, the next step in the process if we wanted to do an operational audit?
I would say if it's the direction of this council, then me and my staff can put the specs into place and do an RFP. I think for something like that, we would want to give other auditing firms an opportunity to submit a proposal for that process. I mean, Malden and Jenkins is welcome to do it as well, as our current auditors, but I think you would want to maybe look at other options, too.
Awesome. And then my final question is just about asset tracking. We had this issue with, or we had, we had lost the computer, but we found it. What is our process? And, and I know that here in Burdette, like, there have been some issues. What is our process for tagging and tracking laptops, computers, whatever that, that we're buying from the city?
Normally, your electronic or technology items don't go through a asset management process. That's normally your more fixed items. We currently don't have a asset management tracking process in place. Probably definitely something that we need with the number of facilities, how big our city is. We definitely want to have some type of way to keep up with chairs, tables, desks, things like that. But I believe, and Mr. Strickland is here, I believe I saw him come in, but I think there is a different process that they go to, go through for technology items.
Is he here? Would he, would he like to speak to that?
Mr. Strickland?
So from a technology standpoint, we track everything primarily digitally. So as the city manager was saying, we'll look at an overall system for all assets, but for us, we need more information related to you being able to look at it and seeing that it's your laptop. So we want to know where it is, if it's vulnerable, and all those different things. So that's kind of what we and how we track it.
Awesome. All right. Councilwoman Willis, you had a follow-up?
Yes. Mr. Hyman and Ms. Sally Jones, when we had that presentation, the, I'm looking for the email and I'll resend it to you. I sent an email request, which starts our legislative process, with four sponsors from the city council, to create a resolution requesting for a performance audit to be done on the entire city. So we're just waiting on that resolution to come back so we can make sure it's on the next agenda. Also, parks and recreation is currently, they have one underway. Do you know when we will be able to get that particular, the results from that? Because I know you're doing a presentation, but we really need the results from that performance audit, because I'm getting a lot of questions from constituents about some things going on in parks, and I, and I believe in transparency.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Travis Landrum, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs. We actually just received a draft and the final report that I just sent to city leadership today. So once we get a chance to review that, we should have that finalized and sent to Mayor and Council. So we just received that today from the Russian and Company.
Okay. So when we, in this resolution, we have already taken care, did they just look at one aspect, or did they look at the whole department for this, for this performance audit?
The audit that was performed for the Parks and Recreation Department handled all the aspects and operations for our operations specifically, as related to financial protocols, procedures, things of that nature for the Parks Department.
Okay. So Ms. Jones, the performance audit, we will have to just do all other departments, since this one was already done?
Right.
Okay. If we can have, if you could get that draft to us, Attorney Hyman, to me and the sponsors, so, and then send it through the legislative process, so we can make sure it's on the next agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, go ahead, sound the next item.
Next item is presentations. The first presentation will be the premium pay plan to be funded via American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. This will be presented by Tammy Sally Jones, City Manager, Karen Slaton Dixon, Finance Director, Nikki Graham, Human Resources Director.
Hold on one second. I think we had a, Dr. Rawl had a question.
Just a quick question. I know we had some comment about that rental assistance program. Fulton County's program only allows six months of assistance, and of course, you know, our pandemic was longer than that. And if we can verify that a person still has hardship and, you know, it's not a duplication and they still have a balance either on their mortgage, I would not want those individuals to be precluded from getting assistance, because some people were out of work for longer than six months. I wanted to say that.
Okay.
And then, just, I think that's the main thing. I, I wanted to make sure that we didn't leave people behind who might have gotten in deeper debt as a result of the pandemic.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Willis?
The next item, you did call on the agenda, but I just wanted to, the record to reflect that this is, this presentation, because it's not on here, I know you have who's going to present, but this is a result of the request from the last council meeting after the request for $2,500 was voted down for Ms. Sally Jones. I had mentioned last council meeting that I was working with Ms. Sally Jones and I had talked to Ms. Graham about bringing a recommendation back to this council that will be inclusive of the American Rescue Funds and the premium pay. So this is the presentation, and I've also requested for Mr. Hyman, and he has that request with the four sponsors, once this presentation is completed, to go ahead and complete the resolution so we can have a further agenda for the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's hear the presentation.
So I'll start off, Mayor, and then Ms. Graham is going to do a portion of this as well. So thank you again to the, the mayor and the council for this opportunity to present this information. As Councilmember Willis mentioned, this was a result of last month's work session when you all asked us to come back with a plan on how we can use the $500,000 that we have allocated for premium pay. And so the, my office, along with the Human Resources Department and the Finance Department, got together to work on this plan that we will be presenting to you today. I do apologize that it was a delay in getting this to you today. We would normally try to get this to you in advance of the meeting, so you can have an opportunity to look at it. But due to some other meetings and other things, we got a little bit behind track. So basically, you know, we now have the final ruse on how to use the American Rescue Plan money from the U.S. Department of Treasury. And ARP funds, as listed in those ruse, basically says that anything that happened from March 3rd, 2021, through December 31st, 2021, as it relates to COVID, would be eligible for the American Rescue Plan. That final rule clarifies that all public employees of recipient governments are already included in the definition of eligible worker. So that was basically our start. You all asked us to come back to, with the plan, we initially thought that it just basically had to be for public safety employees, but now, based upon the final ruse, it can be for all public employees. And it says that the employee must have worked on-site, there can be no teleworking, and there had to have been in-person interaction with the public and with coworkers. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Graham, just to provide for you some additional information regarding eligibility. And we have laid out three options, and she'll go over those options for you, and then we will discuss our staff recommendation. Ms. Graham, our HR Director.
Thank you. Good morning, good morning, good evening, Council, Mayor and Council. Thank you, City Manager, for allowing me to speak. In regards to the options that we're presenting, in the memo, we broke down three options. The first option would be a sliding scale that looks at the employees that were hired during the largest period of time during the pandemic, and that would have been all employees hired before June 31st for the eligibility period. The eligibility period for the ARPA plan is from March the 11th, 2021, to December the 31st of 2021. With that being said, we broke it down based off of employees hired before June, then employees hired within a period of July through September the 31st, and then all employees hired from October to the end of the year. And we did a scale ranging from 1,200 down to 800 based on their hire days. In the second option, we just did it and broke it out by the first half of that eligibility period to the second half of that eligibility, eligibility period, giving 1,200 and then 600 to the remaining half that were hired. And then the third option, we looked at all the employees that worked during that period, giving them the same amount across the distribution. With that in mind, staff would like to recommend the option one, which is a sliding scale, providing a higher payout to employees that worked the longest period during the eligible timeframe. However, all employees will be entitled to a specific payout depending on when they were hired. In addition, staff recommends that the city of South Fulton pays taxes on behalf of the employees, allowing the employees to receive the full value of the payout. Employees will receive this in a separate check from their standard payout, from their standard paychecks for this purpose. Totals, I want to remind the council that totals were, are going to vary a little depending on the eligibility of the employees. Again, certain factors that are considered as City Manager described. Approximate total of employees is what we're basing the, the spread across. This could be more or, or less depending upon when we get the final eligibility list. So we're asking that, staff recommends that you allow approval up to the max of the $500,000 to allow for the possible highest distribution across that sliding scale. That's the recommendation.
Is this the, do we want to, is there another part of the presentation?
No, this is the, the main and only part of the presentation. Again, Mayor, we realize that you may need some opportunity to vet this and look over it. If you have any questions, let us know. But again, we just wanted to follow through on the request of having a plan presented to you at this March work session.
All right, we're going to go down. District one?
Yes. So you talked about a slide, a sliding fee scale. I thought there were some other options. So is it based on the length of the time, based to, how much we pay out, based on your projections?
So the first option is the sliding scale that would, as you mentioned, pay out based on who worked the longest during the period. So with recommendation from staff, we feel that if an employee was with the city during the entire time, they would be eligible for the largest amount of the payout. And then going from there, the second group, and then the last group. Basically, if someone was hired in November, we feel that some, versus someone hired or working since the start of the pandemic, should be afforded more than someone that came at the end.
Okay.
For example, did you see that, that we go over the amounts? Did you say the amount?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. So it's really just, it's one plan, it's just tiered how you, how it pays out?
Yes, ma'am. So it's three options. The first one that we're recommending is a sliding scale, three different tiers of payout. Based on who's been here the longest, working through the pandemic.
Thank you.
District two, Councilwoman Gumps?
So if I'm looking at what you all presented correctly, we have a total of about 425 employees.
During that eligibility period.
And it doesn't appear that any of the employees will be getting a bonus over $1,200? Is that a one-time award? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not $2,500, it'll be 1,200?
Yes, ma'am. That's the, because the amount is a maximum of 500, with so many of a, a large group of employees, then we had to figure out a spread.
Understood. Okay. All right. That was just the clarity. So we're not looking at the 2,500, we're looking at 12, and it's tiered based off of six months, year, and however else?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I would like to mention as well, only current employees with the city during the time of distribution would receive the payout.
Oh, oh, also too, because I just, this just happened at my job. What kind of provisions are you all putting in place so once they get the bonus, they're not going to quit? You know, some people just hang around just to get the bonus. Anything?
That's the conversation to be had.
Yes, we, we didn't even think of that, but we hope our employees would want to stay here. Because also, they will be getting pay raises, those who were here prior to September 30th of 2021, they will get a 3% pay increase. So on top of, you know, if this is, you all accept our recommendation, you know, that's, that's a pretty nice amount.
Well, I mean, that would be ideal, but I know some people may be like, I'm just going to wait for the bonus and then exit. So I didn't know if you had a plan in place. Just something to think about.
Yes.
Waiting to be recognized.
Are you, are you through, Councilwoman Gumps? All right. District three, Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you, Ms. Sally Jones, for this recommendation, and thank you, Ms. Graham, for your hard work on this as well. I am quite pleased, and I know I I am quite pleased and I know, I hope you all didn't feel like I was just, I annoyed you too bad with all of the questions regarding this.
You beat me up.
I just wanted to be fair and equitable. But the great thing about this is that employees are getting a tax-free bonus. And so that's great to get $1,200 without worrying about taxes coming out of it. The thing that I am going to put and ask the sponsors of this resolution, we have four, so we do have support for this. And I'm going to ask the sponsors and I'll call you, we'll call and talk to each other later. I do want to put a provision in the resolution that if an employee leaves within, that they will have to pay this money back. Because, and I'm not saying that for the raises, you know, the cost of living increase, but for this particular piece, I do want to put a criteria in it that maybe six months or leave within six months of the payment of this bonus, or 12 months within the payment of this bonus. We have some precedence that's already set with other agencies. Some agencies, if you leave within three years, you have to pay the bonus back. I don't know if we want to be that punitive, but I do want to look at at least a year. If you leave within a year, that this money will have to be paid back just for this piece, if that can be legally done. And so I'll talk with the sponsors and see if they're amenable to that. All right, thank you.
And let us know if you need us to reach out to some other cities that have done this.
Yeah, if you, if you could go ahead and reach out, first of all, see if it's legal for us to do that. And then if you could go ahead and reach out to other municipalities to see if they had anything, that would be great. I know some of the law enforcement agencies have it in their criteria, but I definitely want it in ours. At least a year, if we need to do more, that I'll defer that recommendation to you. But at least a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. District four, Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff, for working on this plan. Looks very good to me. I do have a couple of questions for clarification. Do we have an estimate of what the tax is going to be like, number one? Also, at the bottom of page one, I think it looks like bullet point number seven. There's a clause there that speaks to a memo about those making $77,000 or more. And I know I raised that issue during our last meeting to know if we could have found a way to at least do something for those folks. Will that memo speak to that issue or will you just be explaining why the funds cannot be used for $77,000 or more employees?
Okay, so to respond to your first question about the taxes, again, that's why we asked that you, the sponsors put in the resolution to allow us to use up to the max of the 500. Because once we narrow it down, this was to present, to give you an idea of how we want to plan to use the funds, once we narrow it down to all those that are eligible, it could be more than 1,200. So once we have that number, then we can calculate taxes on it. But we have identified areas that we can pay the taxes out of. And City Manager can speak more to that. And then to address your second question, we've written, we have written a memo. Because if you see on, on that bullet point, it says that the Department of Treasury asks that if we are doing more than that, for the City of South Fulton, the majority of the salaries are over that hourly raise that they mentioned, 13 an hour. Ours start at a minimum of 15 an hour. So we have a great pool of employees that are over that amount. So we've written a memo to the Department of Treasury explaining why we're going over that and giving that to those employees. And that's what they addressed. They said if we're going to go above or if we have to give out to employees that do not meet the qualifications, provide a memo explaining. And our grants writer has done that.
Okay. Well, my, my last point is I, I, I understand the recommendation that staff is making to do different groups by the terms of the length of employment. However, I want to also give some thought that, you know, during something like COVID, where you're literally putting your life on the line by being in contact with, with folks, whether you're exposed for a day, two days, or for two years, it, it's still a high level of risk. So it, it was with that thought, and I do have an example with someone who, work closely with someone of mine who went out to work, got hired one week, went out to work, got COVID the next week and died. You know, so if, if we would consider it, just to give everyone the same amount, because risking your life during this period is risking your life whether it's for a day or a year. That's all I would say.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian. District five, Mayor Protem Reeves?
Thank you, Ms. Graham, and thank you, Madam City Manager. Y'all answered my questions yesterday in a very thorough presentation. You know, the only thing I would like to see is staff and departments, where they can, to have two commute days. But other than that, great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
District six, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, thank you, mayor. If I could, I would like to just circle back to the tax question because I, I understand that they will get the bonus, the taxes won't come out of the bonus. But won't they then have the tax liability on the back end because it will still be accrued income to them as an employee?
Yes, it will be part of their W-2, our wages earned. And I would ask Karen, the Finance Director, to elaborate more on that, on how that would be applied or affected. Not the expert on the tax part.
Yes, and they will be liable for, for the tax, even though the city is paying. So it is going to show, say they get that $1,200 in their salary, it's, it's not going to match their, their tax because it's pretty much, it's going to be covered by the city. So they won't get credit for that.
So they won't, they won't, they won't have the tax liability on the back end, is what you're saying?
Well, when, when they file their taxes, yes.
When they file. Can we make sure that the employees who receive this bonus understand that there is going to be a tax liability when they file their taxes? Because I would hate for any employee to, you know, think that they've gotten $1,200 and not take the next step and realize that they are going to owe taxes in April of 2023 on the money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. District seven, Dr. Baker?
Thank you. Thank you both for bringing this to us and being patient with us. And thank you for weathering the storm. I truly appreciate it and I'm sure our employees do as well. And speaking of weathering the storm, I do agree with Councilwoman Williams with, when it comes to just letting them know, being prepared for the possible tax that they have to pay in the forthcoming tax season. But I would ask, of course, in my absence still, I would ask that my colleagues don't penalize staff who may decide to leave up to a year. Because that could ultimately be a burden for them. If it's a year now, of course, now we're considering that they may be paying taxes. And even if, if, if it's not the full year, these people have, as I said, weathered the storm and their commitment to our city and our, our, our people has, has already been, been rendered. And I think that they deserve that regardless of if they decide to move on or not. I yield.
All right, I have a couple of quick questions. So to be clear, this plan would cover all employees or only public safety employees?
All employees.
All right.
Eligible.
All eligible, and right, because I know the second concern for the plan that I brought la, two weeks ago was that people who made over $72,000 would not be eligible. Is that still the case?
We want to talk about that portion that's in our memo.
Yeah, so as Councilwoman Sebastian pointed out, as long as we are providing a memo to the Department of Treasury explaining why we are extending the funds to those that don't meet all the full monetary criterias, then we are okay. And our grants writer has also agreed with that and has wrote the memo for us.
Okay, I, I hear you. All right, well, thank you. So be, I, I would like to ask, you know, since I brought the original resolution to, to have all our employees paid, I would like to be added to this resolution. I do agree with Dr. Baker and I believe Councilwoman Sebastian. It's really an award for people who have already served. I don't want to penalize people, but I, I yield to the, the four sponsors of the resolution. If they've got four votes to go forward with that, I, I yield to that. But I would like to be added and the, so all of the money for these bonuses are all coming out of ARP funds? I know that there was a set of bonuses where we were going to give the money out of savings. So is any port, is all, all 100% of these bonuses now going to come out of the ARP funds?
Yes, sir, because one of the stipulations of the ARP or A plan is that it cannot be money already or wages already earned. It has to be in addition to. And that's one of the reasons why City Manager wanted us to also vet it longer, review it longer, make sure that we were implementing it correctly. And we found that out, that it's not anything that we can apply to wages already earned, it's in addition to.
All right, and then just this last follow-up question. You, you had presented last month that there were, that there were buckets of comp time that had been accrued. Is there a, a budget or fund line for which we would pay those out of? Or do they just come out of the general fund?
Yeah. Why don't you go ahead and share? We do have a proposal for the other bucket of money, that's the other $800,000. That was a project that was approved under the ARP projects that I presented to you all. And we were looking at trying to use that to pay out the buckets for public safety. So you want to explain that?
So another part of the ARP plan for public safety only is $800,000. That is to be used to reimburse or payout from the city any time that was banked from overtime where the employees did not get paid. So when we talk about the compensatory time that you're speaking of, and even the holiday leave that was banked, that would be a great fund line to use to replenish the funds in those buckets to the employees.
Thank you. Does that $800,000 cover all of our liabilities?
Are you speaking of the taxes and?
No, I mean, just, does it cover all of the, the amount that has been accrued that needs to be paid out at some point?
I have to look at the numbers on that. It'll come close. But at least it will give us a good starting point. And if you recall, Councilwoman, recall, as of October the 1st of 2021, they have overtime leave, overtime line items that they are now using. So they're, they're not banking this any further, so.
And so that change has been made, that we don't have to worry about this problem going forward. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, to again reiterate that I, I do agree that we should not penalize anyone who maybe would want to leave for whatever their reasons are in receiving these funds. I, I really do support that because, again, this is for work and risk that they have already done. Second thing, I just want some clarity on this. Last meeting, we were talking about a cap of 72, and in this document, it is 77. So just explain why the change and just confirm that indeed the number is 77 because this appears to be, of course, a different resolution. Also, I would, when I talked about making the same payment to everyone, I was looking at the numbers here in the table where the difference between some given everyone versus the top 1,200 was just like $24 or $26. So that's why I was like, well, just give everyone the same if it's that small of a difference, right? And so it sounds as if what you're saying is that the numbers may change or you guys may decide to break these groups up a little bit differently based on the final numbers. Is that, is that what you're saying? Am I interpreting that correctly? Or are they going to come close to these numbers?
Okay, so you gave me a lot in that.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay. So the first part you spoke about was the 72,000, where that number came from. On, on behalf of my colleagues, I don't know where that number came from when it was presented to you. I don't believe I, I provided you with that figure. But looking at the ARP Rescue Plan closely with our grants writer, it's 77. So I wanted to, and again, that's why we pulled it back, said, let us get it all together and print it to you correctly. So that's what we're doing today. So I apologize on that figure being provided.
It's, it's fine. I just wanted to make sure that 77 was indeed the final number.
Okay, yes. And then your second part. The tiers are broken up based on how many employees are in the different months that we group together. Okay? So of course, the amounts are going to be, we want to do at least 1,200 to the majority of the employees that were working with us, with the city during that eligibility period. And then we did a spread evenly of 300 down the different tiers. So we're trying to keep it even, clean. So when we present to the Department of Treasury, it makes sense and it's defendable.
Okay. I'm, I'm not hiding it either way. I was just saying, since it's so close, just give everyone the same amount. That's all.
Councilwoman Willis?
Yes, once we get this resolution approved, how soon, can you give us the timing on when funds will be expended? So we're in March, and if we bring this resolution to the council on the 22nd and it gets approved, will employees get their pay in April or would it be May?
Councilmember Willis, what, what I would probably recommend is because we're doing the 3% across the board for all employees, if you will allow us to, time to do that process first, and then we would implement this afterwards. So I would say within 30 days after that payout.
Okay, so the 3% will happen in March?
Yes.
And so then you want to do that first and then probably maybe within 30 days of that?
We could do this.
Um, do this.
Yeah.
And that would give us enough time to vet through. And so what I'm asking, and I hear my colleagues, and, you know, I know we have to give and take. The best, the most important thing is that we take care of employees and make sure they get this money in their pocket. What I'm asking is that you check with other municipalities and see what the precedence is. And if other municipalities do have that criteria, then let us know so that we don't have to have a lot of discussion about this at the next council meeting. We can pretty much, if possible, maybe put it on the consent agenda to get it approved. All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Dr. Baker?
Yeah, lastly, I just want to say that, I mean, I'm proud to serve South Fulton and having the ability to make our own decisions regardless of what other municipalities may do or not do. And I just think it should be on the consent agenda anyway. And we should just move forward without, you know, checking to see if other people penalize their employees or not if they chose to leave after getting a bonus, after coming to work. they chose to leave after getting a bonus after coming to work during COVID. I think that this is something that we should just do because we have the ability to do it and we govern ourselves. I yield.
All right, thank you. All right, let's talk, go ahead.
I just want to say for Councilwoman Willis, just a correction, the three percent is gonna come in the April first paycheck, so I just want to clarify that so that you don't have an expectation of it in March.
So, so April, three percent?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And then thirty days from that, so it'll be around May?
Yes.
But can we just, once we figure that out, we can get a memo out to put it in a daily drip, make sure department heads are communicating that to employees so we don't have people blasting us all on social media saying, we got money, we won't give them their money?
Okay, we will make sure that we get the word out to our employees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you all.
All right, and I want to say thank you to Ms. Graham. I want to say thank you to Ms. Karen Slaton Dixon. I want to say thank you to Ms. Jamila Chris and to our contracted grants person, Mr. Christopher Brewer. And thank you to the mayor and council.
Thank you, thank you, everybody, for working on this. I'm glad that we can get something for all of our employees. All right, let's talk parks. Please sound the next item.
Actually, the next item is the Old National Park Mixed Use Development Update. This will be presented by Dr. Mark Baker, Chairman of the South Fulton Development Authority, also known as Envision South Fulton.
Yes, I'm not really presenting this, but I would like to start by saying this is a project that started three years ago, over three years ago now, with the members of this body who made an executive decision to say that, you know, we need more for this area, this immediate area. And after appointing the members, myself, Ms. Mercedes Miller, Alicia Ivy, Arnold Jaggs, Andrew Pearson, Dan Coleman, Derek Pollard, Jamal Grooms, and Rick Ross, under, under this body, working along with our city clerk, Mr. Corey Adams, and our city attorney, with our Development Authority attorney, Amelia Walker, as well as, special thanks to use of our way, this project came about after deeding land over to the Development Authority, now known as Envision South Fulton, without a vision of People's Show Paris. So we have an obligation to the city to bring about on seventy-four acres a Hyatt or a Hyatt Fashion Hotel. And after three-plus years of public meetings, feedback from constituents and members who attended those meetings, whether it was in person or throughout the COVID period, we came up with something beautiful, something beautiful, and unprecedented for this area, and I'm proud of it. We had a gentleman by the name of Jeff Butler, who I don't, I believe he's under the weather, and he was unable to make this trip, but he came back to South Fulton to purchase the land that his ancestors were enslaved on, their Cedar Grove. And thanks to the help of Mr. Donald, he put us together, and we met with his partner, who I would like to come up now, Mr. Garci, as well as his attorney. And we put together this project, who he's gonna briefly speak on, but because our mayor has themed work sessions, we're gonna put the emphasis on the parks and rec enhancements. Thank you so much to Mr. Travis Landrum and his, his work with myself and Mr. Garci and his development for these enhancements to Old National Park. Because the property is adjacent to Old National Park, we've worked diligently with these developers who have decided to cover several enhancements to the Old National Park. And unlike many development, developments, this is something where we had in the contract that this is something that they must do before they build one brick of their actual structure, and they're ready to do it, they're happy to do it, and eager to work with our Parks and Rec Department to bring it together. And I believe they may have, they've already, I believe, started working with Hamilton Homes and several other local developers and builders, as it is in their contract as well, to work with those individuals who are quote-unquote typically excluded from opportunities like this. So if you could, Mr. Garci, come forward and speak towards briefly overview of the project as well as a highlight of the Parks and Rec enhancements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for inviting us to give a brief presentation. We won't speak so much on the overall development because we're still going through the rezoning application process, so it wouldn't be appropriate to go into a whole lot of detail. But essentially, we are looking to bring three hotels, some Class A office space, you know, kind of a restaurant entertainment district. And these are all things that we included in our proposed plan. And some of those items could change based on what the studies tell us and what some more of the input from the, from the public and from this body says, but we think that we've got a pretty decent plan in place. And we look forward to returning at a later point to discuss that in more detail with this body. But in the meantime, and I, Mr. Butler, in this regard, he had a medical procedure today, actually, so he was not able to travel to join us this morning, so I'm gonna, or this afternoon, so I'm gonna go ahead and take care of giving some of those information to you. I believe the gentleman is passing around some of the preliminary renderings for the enhancements to Tucker Memorial Old National Park that we're proposing. And just to give you a little bit of background, this is a conversation that actually started with Tony Phillips, the prior department head of Parks and Rec. He gave us some, some inputs, feedback on what he thought would be useful and helpful for the community in and around Old National, particularly as it relates to youth sports. When Mr. Landrum took over, we continued those conversations and made sure that we continued to be collaborative with, with that department to make sure that what we were trying to do was actually something that the community needed.
Okay, if you could, one, one second, Mr. Garci. One, if you could speak maybe without your mask, because people can hear online, and then also, is this, is there an electronic copy of this presentation available online, Mr. Adams?
No, I didn't get a electronic copy. I just had paper copies.
I'm gonna just ask, Mr. Hammond, maybe our cameras can focus on this document that there are about a hundred people that are watching online that just want to see what we are seeing here in the room. So we're, we're going to get a, if we could turn maybe this, okay, they can use the remote camera, and you're, we're, all right, we're gonna try and get it up on the screen so that everyone can see it, but go ahead, Mr. Garci.
Mayor, can he email the PDF to Mr. Adams so that they can put it up on the side screens for the residents to see it?
Yeah, that's perfect. Do you have that, you could? Okay, we'll get that to you. Would you like me to hold on for a second while we get that taken care of?
No, we're gonna, we're already a little behind time, so we're just gonna have, ask you to go ahead.
Sure, sure. As I mentioned, this depiction of, of these improvements are, were done in kind of, in concert and collaboration with the Parks and Recs Department over the, really over the last two years. And so with that, we wanted to mention three main objectives for these particular improvements. The first was to upgrade existing offerings. I think right now, as I understand it, the park is really only being used for youth football. And although there are baseball fields there, and I think some old batting cages and things like that, it's really, I think, only being used for youth football. So we wanted to make sure that we made an improvement to what was currently being offered. The second main objective was to make the park more accessible, more accessible to other youth sports, but more accessible to the community at large as well. And so I know those in the back may not be able to see, but online, you can see there's, you know, there's walking trails there, there's a play area for kids, there's a fan con course that will include concessions and, and other things like that. So we thought that was important. And the third objective was to make the park a revenue generator and a profit center for the city. I'll get into the specifics of some of these improvements, but essentially, we wanted, wanted to create an opportunity for the city to host tournaments and host meets and things that, you know, that people would pay to participate in so that this, this fixture of the community from our perspective could be used as a profit center for the city. So that is, those are the three main objectives for, for us doing that. Oh, I see we're online, okay, great. So the first thing we'll start off with is the, is the football field that will eventually become a football stadium. I believe right now, the football field at Tucker Memorial Park is a very, very nice patch of grass, but I don't think there are any bleachers, I think there may be a scoreboard, and that's about it. So what we are proposing to do is to build a, a more comprehensive football field that have an eight-to-nine lane track around the perimeter, a stadium for bleacher seating, and also a press box and all of that. We're pretty excited about that because we think youth football, I know, is a very, very big part of that community, and, and we want to, we want to enhance that. Moving on to the larger baseball field on the top right, those dimensions are going to be for, it can accommodate up to NCAA college-level competition. And the two smaller fields, the youth fields in the middle there are, the fences back up to one another, and they will be able to accommodate all levels of youth, from T-ball all the way up to, I believe it's Pony, Pony League. Those fences are removable so that they can be brought in and out to accommodate the dimensions of whatever level is playing on that field. And then the other two fields are, they're, we've identified them as soccer fields, but they're really multipurpose fields. One of the things that we talked about that both Mr. Phillips and Mr. Landrum has confirmed in our, in our most recent conversations is that youth soccer, things like field hockey, lacrosse are things that Parks and Rec had been contemplating adding to their offerings over the course of, of a certain span of time. And so we wanted to make that a reality as well. I wanted to back up. All of the fields will be equipped with all-season turf. So rather than having grass, we would be installing all-season turf. We've actually engaged a company by the name of Turf of America, which is one of the top field builders in the country, to help with the design, the planning, and the, the laying down of these fields. They also provide infrastructure, so things like the, the bleachers and the press box, they also are able to, to provide that for us as well. From a timing standpoint, our aspiration is to have all of these enhancements ready to go by the time the fall sports season starts, which I believe is in October-ish. Practice may start a little bit earlier than that, but that's our, that's our goal. Our turf builder has told us it'll take about three, between three and four months to, from start to finish, to get it all done. The first thing that would have to get done is it would have to be, the, the land would have to be cleared, and then the turf building company would come in and figure, would figure out a, a plan for drainage. That's the very, very first thing they do before they lay anything else down. So there's a little bit of preliminary work that would happen at the, at the outset, but even from that process, from the very, very beginning, once the, the land has been cleared, completion should take no, no longer than three to four months. And I want to thank, by the way, Hamilton Homes from Piper O'Brien and her for, one, preparing these boards, and they've been really instrumental in helping, helping us and giving us pointers on design and, and layout and all of that, so I appreciate your assistance. That concludes my comments. If there are any questions from the council, I'd be happy to, to answer.
All right, all right, before we go down the line, I did just want to ask, this is a themed agenda around parks, but do you have any updates that you can give about the hotels or the, the other, the non-park side of the development?
Sure, a few. As I mentioned, we're in the middle of the rezoning application process, so what that entails, obviously, as most of you know, is we have to order studies and, and do a bunch of those things, so those studies take a while. The project scope is very, very large, and so those things take even, even longer than most. So some of, some of the initial proposed items could be changed, could be amended based on what the studies reveal to us and recommend. But we do have a letter of intent executed with the Hyatt. We have also an MOU executed with Niederlander Worldwide Entertainment. One of the items that will be a part of the development is a performance theater. And for those of you who are familiar with Broadway, the Niederlander Worldwide Entertainment is pretty much owns half of Broadway, and they have agreed to, to help manage that performance theater for us. So that's one of the items that's, that's coming. There are a few other commitments that we are working on from a development partner standpoint that I can't get into now because we're, you know, kind of almost, almost there, but not quite there yet. But we do, I think we are almost about to get an LOI with Hilton as well. So there will be three hotels there, and we're kind of finalizing those arrangements. This development really centers around the hotel piece, and so with the, the airport expansion happening, we're losing about twenty-two hundred, something like that, hotel rooms in southwest Atlanta metropolitan area, and so we're hoping to fill some of that void with, with, with the hotels that we're bringing. One of the other things that will be included, obviously, is Class A office space. So we're working on getting commitments from a couple of financial institutions who would be anchor tenants in that office space. But one of the things that we've heard in the, in the, in the time that we first began pursuing this project from a number of constituents, both elected officials, appointed officials, and members of the community, is Class A office space. That was almost a universal need expressed by just about every constituency that we talked to over the last couple of years, and so that will be a big part of the development as well. And again, like I said, we'll, we'll have more detail about that hopefully at a later meeting in the, in the very near future that we can, we can get, give you a little bit more detail. But that's about where we're at right now.
All right, thank you. I want to go down the line, District One, Dr. R.
Thank you for your presentation. I think you hit on a couple of things that I think the public should weigh in on, or at least acknowledge that these projects take time. So this has been in the work for about three years, as you've indicated, and I'm glad to see it's coming to fruition, so.
Sure.
Again, I'm looking forward to seeing this park by the end of the year, so thank you for your presentation.
My pleasure. And I just, I want to add to that, you know, this is a, a project that has a lot of personal meaning to our entire company, and Dr. Baker mentioned that Jeff's family was enslaved on what is now known as South Fulton. The first ten years of my life were spent in your district, as a matter of fact. My childhood home was on Dublin Drive between Campbellton and Camp Creek, and so we're extremely excited to be able to do something like this for the city. And I will tell you that there are a number of other investments that we are trying to make that I'll be able to share at a later point, but there are a number of other investments that we, as a company, are trying to make with this development for this community because we believe that much in that, this project and in this community. So I just wanted to add to your comment about, yeah, it really, really is an important thing for.
I'm very excited for the youth in our city to be able to use those kind of facilities, so thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, District Two, Councilwoman Gomes.
Thank you for your presentation. So we know that many of our students have to, in our South Fulton schools, have to travel to like Gwinnett area for swimming and competition. Was there any consideration to doing anything aquatic within this park?
There, there wasn't, but not because we weren't interested in it, but we really started with kind of what was already there and trying to improve what was already there. So our, our purchase agreement with the Development Authority really just asked us to make some improvements, like for the turf and adding some bleachers and things like that. But when we walked out on the site and we saw so much other, so many other things that were needed, we decided to ramp up. And just so you know, we've, we've committed about six million dollars to just earmarked just to do these innovations. And we think most of it, about four, a little over four of it, is just for the turf and the infrastructure alone. So to answer your question, it's not that we didn't consider it because it wasn't a priority, it was just, it wasn't, that wasn't there, so we were working kind of with what we saw and tried to upgrade what was, what was there, both historically and presently. I have mentioned to Mr. Landrum a couple of times that if there are other conversations that could be had about other things that, that Parks and Rec may need, and to the extent that we can be a good partner and participate in those conversations. and to the extent that we can be a good partner and participate in those conversations, uh, we'd be happy. Um, I, I couldn't commit beyond that, but we certainly would be happy because we intend to be here for a very long time and we want to be good neighbors and good citizens of this city. And so uh, to the extent that that is a need that um, we can help meet, we'd certainly be open to the conversation. But the reason there's no aquatic appearing here is just because there, there isn't anything there right now and it, it didn't occur to us to.
Yeah, it, it's definitely a need and I think, you know, based off of what I see here, that this would be, you know, a, a central location where a lot of our athletics that are happening throughout our schools um, will participate and congregate in. So I think, you know, just thinking a, a little bit more and maybe it is a future enhancement, but I think, you know, doing an aquatic, anything aquatic uh, related to that because we have a lot of students that have to go all the way to Gwinnett outside of our city um, to, you know, just to swim and compete. And I think that would, it, it just would enhance it. So that's just my, my thoughts. But if you can, consider it. Thanks.
Thank you uh, for this presentation. I am um, glad to see that um, in this area we are finally getting a multi, um, a multi-use complex. Uh, I have uh, traveled to Gwinnett County and they have a nice one. Chatham County, they have a nice one. Um, and up in Cobb County, I've been to theirs and they have a nice one. Um, I do believe we do need another aquatic center somewhere in our city. But when I look at these multi-purpose uh, sports complex, I have, I haven't seen a, um, any aquatic attached to multi, I haven't seen one in Chatham. I haven't seen one in Gwinnett. Not saying it doesn't exist, but I do think we need one, another one in the area. Our kids have just won a national championship here in South Fulton and I wish that would have gotten as much media attention as some of the mess that uh, that, but I'm very proud of them. I am very proud of them to be from an African-American community and um, that sport is not yet African-American dominated. And we have clinched a national um, championship. And so um, and the only pool aquatic area in this city is Walker Mall Park. And we are spending all kinds of money to bring in compliance and keep it up. Um, it's over twenty years old. And so while this, it may not be, it may not be feasible to have it here, but we do need another one somewhere um, in our city, maybe in Cedar Grove, you know, since we already have one on the side of town at Walker Mall. But we do really, we're in desperate need of some aquatic centers.
That's, that's a really good point. Actually, we um, we kind of have, we have some property on Cedar Grove Road that I actually, I will mention to Jeff.
And I don't mean to step on your toes, but I'm just, I'm just thinking about space and um, you know, where we could just have an aquatic center and not just focus on aquatics. And, but I'm glad that, can, can you um, give me an idea of when um, the timing of this is, when is construction going to start?
So we're hoping um.
And, and can, um, Councilwoman Gomes said people can't hear, so can you speak up a little bit?
Sure, sure. Can y'all, can y'all hear me now?
Much better.
Okay, sorry. I always think I'm screaming into these and apparently I'm not. Um, I believe we are trying to start moving some dirt on the park renovations this spring.
Okay.
Yeah, so um, um, a couple of dominoes have to fall. One of the other things that could affect the timing, our turf builder was explaining to us a couple of weeks ago, that uh, supply chain has been an issue. So materials could take a little bit longer um, to arrive and there's not much we can, can do about that, but, but, but do our best. But we absolutely, and we have a couple of contingency plans um, for if things take a little bit longer. Um, we really, really want to be able to kick the youth football season off on time. Um, and so there may be a, a contingency for one of the other fields to serve as the football field for the fall, if, if it takes a little longer. That's a, you know, worst case scenario, but we're, we're hoping not to have to do that, but we have thought about um, that given the, the issues that may, may occur with supply chain.
Well, uh, you know, I mean, I know a lot of the material is still sitting in the Savannah River in containers, so you can't control that. But um, I mean, it, so without that challenge, this project would normally take about six months or a year?
Three to four months.
Oh, three to four months? Okay. So I do know how inclement weather is and I know we are um, dealing with supply chain demands. Um, but, and I'm not asking you to rush this project because when you rush and cut corners, then we end up having to come back later and uh, try to redo things. So um, thank you.
I will tell you that, I talked to the turf builders today, that one of the owners is a longtime, longtime friend of mine. We went to high school together and I've known him for a long time. And he said, "We're gonna send four teams up to get this done." Um, so, so it'll get done uh, well and it'll get done efficiently and, and in the right way, but it'll also get done as fast as it can, as it can be done to be done right. Um, I wanted to echo um, uh, just elaborate on, on a point that both you and uh, Councilmember Gomes mentioned about the aquatic center. Um, we have had a couple of conversations with other people who have expressed interest in assisting with this project and they have proposed uh, like a multi-purpose center. Um, but those conversations haven't gotten very far yet. They may. I just, I didn't come prepared to talk about those because it, it wasn't real yet. But um, there are other potential development partners that have thought about what you're, what you're raising. So um, that, when I say we're interested in participating in those conversations, um, you know, I, I, I mean that. So um, it has not, it's not an afterthought. There are people that, that have that same um, desire. So if it can be done, I, I certainly, I'm sure the conversations will be had.
No, we need an aquatic center. I, I definitely agree with her. It's just um, we just gotta work with Mr. Langstrom to find out where best, and like you say, find somebody that's willing to do it and the money. Thank you.
District four, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and um, Councilman Willis, ouch. Anyhow, um, thank you. I um, I really support this project. As you know, um, there was a um, there was some discussion in which I was involved with as a citizen.
Sure.
So I'm glad to see that this particular project is moving forward and I, I will do whatever I have to do to help to support it.
We appreciate that.
The um, I have a couple of questions. Just, I know this is a rough sketch.
Sure.
Um, but is the idea that this area will become sort of a multi-purpose for even tournaments? I, I heard you mention that.
Right.
Right? Um, and so even in thinking about what this will look like, and this is a rough sketch, I don't see much area for things like parking and fan stands and this sort of stuff. So i- if you, you know, again, I know it's not finished, but kind of elaborate on maybe plans for that because I think we had talked about acquiring some other lands for parking deck and so on in very, very early stages, right?
Uh, and I apologize. I'm glad you mentioned that. I can't believe I forgot that um, very important detail. So uh, you may be able to see uh, on this, on the video screen, um, on just past, yes, right there. That is actually a parking garage that will support one of the buildings on our, on our proposed development. And one of the things we agreed to do was to share that um, parking structure with the city. One of the things uh, Mr. Langstrom and I spoke about, I think even earlier today, was um, figuring out if any, in the interim, before that structure goes up, if any interim parking uh, would be needed and where and if we could maybe have some temporary parking while some of the projects, there, there are conversations being had about how to accommodate that. But parking is probably outside of sports offerings, I think chiefly among the concerns of, of that community. And so we absolutely, parking is absolutely at the top of the list of things to make sure we accommodate. So thank you for bringing that up because I can, apologize for forgetting that detail on my presentation.
And I, I do agree with Councilwoman Willis. Sorry, were you finished?
No, I was, I was. Go ahead.
I do agree with, with Councilwoman Willis in terms of um, areas to, to be quite honest. It's probably gonna be um, a heavy push of mine to get a multi-purpose facility of some sort into District four because, you know, even last night I, I had my own town hall and I had to borrow a facility.
Right.
And I, I, I wasn't quite satisfied with the space, but you know, I came in the door and I challenged my, my city manager and, you know, I'm doing it to Mr. Langstrom as well. District four needs the most things and I'm talking to my colleagues at the same time. You know, we have a lot of folks there. We have a lot of areas and a, and a lot of space and you just mentioned owning some lands there too. So I'm just putting that on the table, okay? But thank you very much for your work. I'm looking forward to this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Reeves, District five.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me and uh, thank you, Mr. Garzad, for your presentation. Uh, I see a lot of green space and with Class A office space, have y'all looked at trying to carve out anywhere, anything for a driving range?
A driving range. I know that's, I know that's something you really, really love. Uh, Councilman Reeves, we have not, but we have not for this project. And like I said, for the same reasons uh, I mentioned to uh, Councilmember Gomes, um, we kind of came at this from what we saw that was already there. Um, but I will certainly raise it with Mr. Bella. I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility. Um, but uh, we would need to, we would need to talk through what that might look like on a, on, on this particular site. But um, again, we have some more land to work with uh, right next door. So these are the kinds of conversations though that we intend to have um, with this body. Um, we have not had a chance to have the council's full, uh, formal input uh, on the overall development. But like I said, we, we intend to be a good citizen of the city and, and, and partners with, with its council. And so those kinds of conversations are the things, we need to know that kind of stuff uh, to see if we can, if we can make it work. We're coming at this project differently and we're hoping to kind of set a blueprint for how development should happen so that when other developers come to this city to try and do things, that you can reasonably have an expectation of them about what kind of commitments they're going to make. And so um, and then that starts with having conversations like we're having now and that we'll continue to have over the coming uh, months and, and, and years. So.
Yes, sir. And uh, here's something that definitely can set you apart is uh, build a pedestrian bridge connecting that part over Old National and one that lights up. Oh, it lights up at night, you know? And then it connects down to Burdette Gym and so uh, people are able to have uh, walking access without having to cross that street. That can set you apart.
Sure, understood, understood.
Y'all gonna put that in?
Walk, I mean, I will, I will, what I will say is walkability is one of the things that we, we committed to both contractually with the development authority, but also something that we believe in um, on, on this development. You see walking trails on this um, uh, this, these renderings here and there are walking trails and green space interspersed throughout uh, the overall p- p- planned development as well. So things like, things like that are always in play. Again, we're waiting to get some recommendations from our, from the studies that come back to find out just how big we can, how big we can go um, on things like that. But your point is well taken.
Absolutely. And the very most important thing to me at least is I heard you say that turf builder, they will, is it turf builder?
Yes, uh, turf, turf, turf of America.
Turf of America. They're gonna send four teams.
Yep.
Will you, sir, make a commitment to seeking out some youth who want a career path in this particular field and pre-train them? So when they're ready and this uh, project materializes, you have a pool of trained workers you can pull right from here.
Absolutely. That's, that, that's actually one of the points in our um, in our um, the, we haven't executed the, the, the final contract with them. We have a, a, an MOU with them. But the deal points that we're negotiating now, one of the things that they have committed to doing is training um, locally here for the maintenance of the, of the fields themselves so that this community can take care of, of, of that over the span and maximize the life, the uh, the shelf life of the, of the fields themselves. So, and that undergirds pretty much all of the development partners that we're engaging with, um, is doing just what you talked about. Um, job creation and training is a, at the, at paramount in, in all that. We want as much of this development to be um, brought out of the ground by as much local talent as possible. It won't be able to be done with all local talent, obviously, but that is, everybody that we have talked to about participating with us in this project understands that we have that expectation of them. So we will, we'll make good on that.
Right. And that's unskilled, skilled and managed.
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Reeves. District six, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you for this presentation. Um, as a long-term resident of Old National Highway, I am delighted to see that progress has been made and is going to continue to be made to bring something like this to the Old National corridor. Um, I would like to just kind of circle back to the comments that you made about football and football season.
Yes.
Because I thought, I heard you say that you were targeting October and I wanted to just very quickly point out that Oc- by the time we get to October, we're actually in homecoming season. Football season starts in August.
In August, okay, fair enough.
And so um, you know, as you're making your plans, if you want to start football at the start of football season, that might escalate your timeline significantly because we would need to be recruiting over the summer months for football to be ready to start at the start of football season.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams. Uh, District seven, Dr. Baker.
Yes, uh, thanks, Mr. Garzad. I just want to uh, highlight a couple of things that uh, are in the purchase-sell agreement uh, regarding this um, this project as well as the, the development overall. It is to include um, some portion of affordable housing.
Correct.
With reduced rent for public safety officers.
Correct.
Uh, as well. And I know that um, my colleagues, Councilwoman Gomes, Councilwoman Willis, I even heard uh, Councilman Sebastian mention the aquatic uh, component. And I know you responded telling them that there are other uh, opportunities. And if at all possible, I would uh, request that if you guys can stand by yourself and uh, Mr. Holmes as well as uh, Mr. Langstrom for the possibility to share the details of how we can actually have that when it comes to an executive session regarding real estate because of the components that are in the air. There's a lot of great things that Mayor and Council should know uh, that we can make a decision on to actually bring uh, much more to this project uh, in an amplified fashion if we uh, just allow them about two or three minutes to share uh, regarding real estate in executive session. And lastly, uh, another part of the purchase-sell agreement uh, is lights on Old National. I envision uh, the opportunity to make South Fulton and Old National the place where people can go and drive down during holidays to see lights. And uh, through this purchase-sell agreement, we have a certain amount of money every year that actually started, I believe, in December.
Right.
So we already have a pot of money that is uh, to go towards the lights that uh, Councilman Reeve even, you know, expounded on to go towards through Old National. Whereas my, my whole vision is for you to be able to drive underneath the lights at Old National. Pause. The, the, the lights in Old National and, and drive under as if uh, the tourist attraction that this would ultimately become in the long run. But we've already started acquiring those funds through this agreement. And with us being in District five, I would be remiss if I didn't mention the contribution of uh, the Councilwoman Rosie Jackson to this, to this project overall. She uh, she amplified it a great deal and pushed to help have us, you know, come to where we are right now. Her, Khalid, myself is meeting in uh, uh, together collectively as well as in silos with uh, Mr. Butler and Mr. Garzad. And uh, if you're watching, thank you, Councilwoman uh, Jackson. How are you?
All right, uh, Councilwoman Gomes, District two.
No, I'm, I know I'm full of questions. I know. I'm sorry. I'm just excited about the project. But um, like Councilmember Baker mentioned, lights. So looking at this um, this project, I don't see the lights. And what I've learned from, you know, the walking trails that we have on the other side of Wolf Creek, lighting is important, especially if we're gonna have games so parents can walk and do, because I, I see this more as a community engagement, like a, a place where families will come, they'll park their cars, they have picnics. So maybe like some light. I'm trying to get everything out of the developer upfront. So you can probably see that. But lights, um, call boxes, you know, those type of things and make sure that that's considered um, with this project because overall, we want to make sure that we don't have to come back on the back end and say, hey, you know, we need this.
Right.
But um, I definitely love the project. And I think, oh, question. Is the name of the park Mansa Park? Is that what the proposed name is?
Um, we weren't proposing necessarily to change the name of this park. Uh, we are creating green space on our development and that will be called Mansa Park, yes.
Okay.
But, so we, we hadn't had a conversation about, and we hadn't proposed to change the name of, of this park.
Okay, okay, no problem. Thank you.
But to your point about the lights, though, um, so when I mentioned turf, turf of America, they would be helping with the turf building and the infrastructure. That's, that's also a part of that. Actually, one of the very first things that Brad, I forget Brad's last name, when he walked the site with us, um, the first thing he noticed was those big tall wood light poles. He was like, yeah, we gotta, we gotta get rid of those. So, so, yeah, absolutely, lights, call boxes, all the things that you would, that you would need to make this not just pretty but safe and usable, those will, those will all, those will all be, uh, part of, part of our, part of that development. So, again, like I said, we've got a just under $2 million kind of to work with to add whatever accoutrements need to be added outside of the, you know, the fields and the infrastructure and the, and the buildings, um, to work with. So, there, you know, we'll, we'll absolutely include those kinds of things. Call boxes and screen, park benches, you know, those, the things that you expect to see when you, when you go to a park. It won't just be fields and gates and nets. It'll be, you know, everything that you, that you need.
And cameras.
And ca- oh, yeah, sure.
And cameras. But I'm not talking about the big ugly lo- long poles. I'm talking about like solar power and things like that. So, if we can get it on the front end, that'd be good. But thank you for it.
Our development is going to be a green development, FYI.
Absolutely.
So, um, and we're not spending all this money to just let people run around and not be able to see what's happening. So, yes, cameras will definitely be there.
Oh, and that'll be good, too, if you can have, um, I'm asking for everything, electric vehicle parking as well?
Oh, yeah, sure, 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 sure. That's the, that's where everything is headed, so absolutely.
I, I know we have another meeting, so I apologize. But thank you. We'll talk.
Sure, sure.
Awesome. Uh, I got a couple, couple quick things before I turn it back, I guess, over to Dr. Baker. We do need to move, though. But, um, uh, thank you, uh, Councilman Reeves, pedestrian bridge. I do love that idea. Not holding you to that. We do have to check with, uh, GDOT as well because we were crossing over a, a state route. But, uh, and I think as we are working with the LCI, there are some other conversations I've been having with several urbanists about reshaping Old National. We'll have to talk with, uh, GDOT about that. Thank you, Councilwoman Gums. I agree about the safety features, particularly along the walking trails. I also want to ask on behalf of the First Dog that, um, we get some poop stations so that people are out walking their pets. We do want to make sure that, um, we're making South Fulton more pet-friendly. Just briefly, uh, what is the total cost of, I like, I know that parking deck is like 20 million easily, but like what is the revenue model and what do you need from the city? Or is the commercial side of this development financing all of these parking improvements?
So, yeah, largely, this, 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 this is going to be funded by the, the development. And so, to the extent that what is needed there exceeds our $6 million budget for this, we would, we would hope that we would, we'd be partnering with the city on, on adding that. But we think we can knock a tremendous hole in what's needed there. Um, and we, we're hopeful that we'll be able to cover all of what's needed there. But to the extent that, that we can't, um, we think we will, we'll move things pretty significantly, um, um, in that direction so that this park can be in a very, what I consider to be a short amount of time before the year is out, something that, um, will be a, a place for the city to congregate and use and, and, um, I think most importantly for this body, um, you know, may generate some revenue from, so.
Awesome. Uh, so I will ask, when you bring this back, if there's any additional financing or anything you need from the city, just so we can be clear.
Sure.
We're putting together our mid-year budget in April and then our budget in, uh, October. So, if there's financing or any sort of tools that you'll need from the city, we will need to hear from that. And lastly, I'm gonna take a few quick comments from Councilman Reeves and, and Dr. Baker. But, uh, first, I just want to personally say, I know that this may be, um, your final meeting, Dr. Baker, on this side of the table. I want to just say personally, thank you so much for this incredible work. I don't know if you all know, but this isn't District Seven. This is, uh, this is District Six. This is right, it, it begins right at the end of this street and then goes back towards Pleasant Hill Road. So, so, Dr. Baker, this wasn't even your council district. But I think that it shows a dedication, uh, to look beyond. Definitely. To look beyond council, uh, my district or our districts and really do something that's good for the region and for the city. So, again, thank you, thank you, thank you so much. And if you are doing things like this on council, I am excited about what is next for you.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, but you answered my question dealing with, uh, the solar of my colleague, Representative Gums. And, uh, I too, uh, want to thank Mr. Baker for your service and, uh, thank you. Did an excellent job, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Um, this is not just my work. This is all of our work. This was our vision. We sat down, we talked about it, and this is how government is supposed to work for people. So, I'm just proud to help and be a catalyst for it. The only thing that I wanted to add is that the Development Authority, uh, has been meeting for years, and they continue to meet, and I urge and encourage everyone to be a part so that a lot of the questions and a lot of the input that we heard could have been already a part of this project. You know, if, if we just come in, the clerk posts it, and then we meet just like the council meets. Uh, and it's a public meeting, and we allow public comment. And, you know, we've always done that every last Monday of the month. Every last Monday of the month, hopefully, we'll be back in person as, you know, things are, uh, getting better. But as of right now, we're still meeting virtually, but it's at 6:00 PM. 6:00 PM, and it's, uh, publicly posted on the City of South Fulton's website. Thanks.
Uh, I just had one final comment. I'm sorry. Apparently, Mr. Butler is watching and wanted me to mention that he'll be here next week. Company flies in Monday and leaves out, I think, Friday morning. So, if any member of this body, uh, whether individually or collectively would, would like to sit down with us and, and, and talk through this, this, this plan, we'd be happy to do that. I know we've met with a couple of you individually before on other, other matters, so we'd be happy to. Just wanted to offer, offer that up. And we can, um, you can let me know, contact me, and we'll, we'll, we'll set up a time.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Mr. Mayor, the next item. It's item eight, Parks and Recreation and Cultural Affairs. Travis Landrum, Parks Director, Antonio Valenzuela, Public Works Director, Anthony Kerr, Procurement Manager, Gary Leffwitch, Communications Director, and Keith Meadows, Chief of Police. First item is reopening of Parks Facilities, Facilities Repairs Updates, Facilities Staffing Plan, and Park Rangers Staffing Plan.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. Travis Landrum, Parks, Recreation and Cultural Affairs. As it relates to the items that are listed in the agenda, we have an update for the URA projects which speaks directly to the Facility Repairs Update. So, if we are allowed to, we would like to have that presentation uploaded. And we have Mr. Valenzuela and Mr. Dana Smith available for any questions and further comment regarding this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, City Manager and resident of the City of South Fulton. We can present to you the status of the thirteen URAs that were approved by City Council. As this afternoon, we have sent a detailed summary on the status of each of the projects that are on each district and the, uh, you are, on the, all the URAs. Next, uh, slide, please. Those slides are the, all the URAs that were approved previously by council. And what we've done is, uh, at this, on this slide, we present to you the initial approval of council on the projects that were approved up to $4.6 million. All those projects are on a detailed report that our City Manager should be passing to you all. The status of, on each of, of the projects. Some of them are being completed, others are in the process of being implemented due to materials and so on that are being scheduled. Next slide, please. That's, uh, the same thing as the implementation of the $4.6 million. Next slide, please. That states the same. And th- those are the current conditions of some of the projects that we have. That's on the work of all. We have three roof replacements. The roofs are about to be completed. On Cent Town, it's a similar situation where we have completed the roof replacements as well as, uh, the walls inside, uh, the, uh, underground foundations. And now we're looking at, uh, pending items that we need to resolve such as the mold remediation and, uh, an HBC system for the, for the gymnasium. Next slide, please. Those are the smaller projects that we've done. Our Wilkerson Mill, uh, project on the concession stand, as well as for Creel Park, we're displaying the, uh, the previous conditions and actual conditions. Uh, on the Clifton Dell, uh, South Art Center, as you know, the design is underway. Uh, we're on the final revisions. After, uh, agreeing with the consultant, we're gonna be putting this ITV for the, uh, implementation of the project. That will be the second phase of, on this project. We're looking at completing all the design and estimated costs on the Clifton Dell in the month of March. And then, uh, we'll proceed with, uh, procurement information for construction purposes. Those are another, on Tremol Park, similar projects that we already have completed. And Cent Town on the South Fulton Cent Center that we completed with, on, on, on parks. And it's a summary of what we have for, on the Phase One and the Phase Two facilities. Uh, so that concludes a brief summary on where we are on the URA projects.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop here and just take questions on this URA piece. District One, Dr. Rowe.
He knows. We talk URA all the time. I don't have any questions. Um, thank you for the presentation. I think it's a good example to let our constituents see the work that's being done and try to bring these facilities up to par. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you, uh, Doc. District Two, Councilwoman Gums.
No, I don't really have any questions. I'm glad that you, um, actually showed this. I actually kind of included it in my newsletter, but maybe I do have a question. For Phase Two, when are you anticipating that to start?
We should be completing this month all the design, uh, items that we need before going into procurement. So, we're looking into most likely, uh, in sometime in April. It will be on ITV. That needs to be advertised for at least 20 days, so that will be a month. Then the contract execution and, and award and approval by council, I would say, May or June. And then we'll be looking into July construction.
So, is that just for Clifton Dell Park or is that for all of the URA projects? They have a different timeline?
All, all the projects on the URA, you're gonna see, we sent a report earlier in January as today we have a new report on the current conditions of each of them. And the April, the July will be only for, uh, Clifton Dell. The other projects are already under construction. We're contracted. We're just waiting for, in so many instances, for materials and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
What is the timing of the, uh, roof repair completion?
We are on, on the work of all. We're almost done. Uh, the last stage, I believe, is on the, the pool. Is that right? So, it's just the, the pool roof that should be completed. I think we have it for, is that July? Au- August?
August?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay, and when is the timing of the sliding, uh, board? I mean, the slide for, in the pool?
On, on the pool table, I mean, on the pool, once the roof is completed, the slide comes after that. So, we're looking at July, August.
So, we're gonna open up the, the pool without the slide being available for the community again this year? Is that what we're gonna do?
It's, uh, we definitely want to provide a, a full center for Mr. Travis, and then we'll go from there. It's one, one of those things that we just can't control it on the delivery of materials and others that are required. There's a major delay on materials for everything that we're doing these days, unfortunately.
Okay, I understand. Mr. Uh, Ms., Ms. Sally Jones, we need a write-up on that. We need communication around that. Because, um, the last time the pool was open, um, several residents complained that the slide was, in the pool was not available for use. And it's been, what, two years now? And I do understand we have a sup- supply cha- challenge, but we need that communication written up so we can explain to residents while we're going into another year, um, without the availability of that slide.
Okay, I'll get with the staff.
Okay, thank you. And can you put that online as well?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Uh, District Four, Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Mayor. I know especially with the Cedar Grove Park, there have been things that have been, you know, scheduled on the table, delayed. And I know when I had a meeting with the consultant on the park master plan, you know, he shared with me a concept for that park that seemed to be much different than this particular funding is suggesting. I also noticed in the notes, if I'm reading it correctly, that although they are listed, um, the recommendation is not to actually do the work there because of the pending Parks Master Plan, um, program for Cedar Grove Park. So, if you can confirm for me that that is indeed the case. And if there are at all any, um, information as to when that Park Master Park program would come online, I would just like to get some clarity so I can communicate that, um, specifically to the residents.
You, you stand corrected. We have coordinated this with, uh, the Director of Parks. As initially, the recommendations and approvals on the URA were minimum on your district, but there will be other items under the parks, uh, under the master plan with parks.
Okay, so...
So, the funding that we have on the URA on Cedar Grove is, uh, very minimum?
It is?
Yes.
So, um, does that mean that is gonna be held for later use or repurposed? Or just executed at the time of the Parks Master Plan Program?
If I'd like to add, um, it was my understanding that last year, uh, the City Manager had supported, I think it was $325,000 that would be allocated for the budget next year. Is that for 2023? Is that correct? As it relates to Cedar Grove Park, uh, as your request relates to the master plan, uh, which will be presented later, those funds will be there for that park specifically. And then we would hope that when the master plan is presented and recommendations as it relates to funding are presented to Mayor and Council, that those funds will still be available for Cedar Grove Park. So, as to the timeline, I can't say specifically, but there was that amount of money that was allocated for 2023, uh, from the City Manager when I arrived last year.
Okay. I, I know one of the things with that park around the, um, the baseball field is a, is a walk track that has deteriorated quite a lot. And, um, I know one of the concerns with residents is can that even be patched or rehabilitated so that when folks are walking there, it does not present a danger of people tripping or twisting their ankles accordingly? Because it's probably the thing that that park is used for most, actually.
We will take that into consideration, Council.
Okay.
Thank you. And we, and we will have a master plan presentation, I think, right after this. Mayor Pro Tem Reeves, District Five.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Uh, Mr. Valenzuela, do we have a date of installation for the HVA system right here at Burdette Gym?
Uh, the HBC system, we have attempted to do in more than two occasions, and currently it's under invitation to bid. I believe the bid opens up next week, this week. So, upon receiving the bids, that's when we'll have it, a recommendation for council approval.
Okay, so this is the third time this is going off the bid, is it correct?
Uh, it will be, I think, the second time. It's unfortunately... Unfortunately, that, you know, bidders came back here and provided a quote when it's about to issue them, and they notice proceed, they came back with a higher amount, and that was due to supplies and so on, so we couldn't hold it.
Okay, thanks, sir.
District Six. All right, District Seven, Dr. Baker. All right, I have a couple of questions. First, I do just want to make a point of clarification. I saw Councilwoman Jackson give us the eye when we were talking about the fields. I do want to let you know that Calvin Lamar Field, we will not be touching the name of that field. Mr. Garcia, one of the fields has a name, and we want to make sure that we preserve the names of the people who are there. The, as Councilwoman Willis talked about, our swim team just won the state championship. They're headed to Iowa, but they can't practice in their pool. Is that, is the pool not open for them to practice as a team in? And where is our award-winning team practicing?
Yes, sir. We have coordinated with the swim team to make sure that they are able to secure a swimming location. Coach Reno has reached out to some of the other service providers that he's familiar with, but we actually just started the draining of the pool this week, I think, to go ahead and proceed with the roof work that is necessary over there. So they're currently unavailable to practice at Welcome All, but that just started with the pool draining that took place this week as we speak.
Is there, I mean, I wish that we had made sure that we had a place for them. Is there, I don't want to mess up the timelines or, just do what you can. And then my, my, my final question is, the reason that I really wanted this presentation is because I really, really, really want to see all of our park buildings and facilities opened. Creole Park has been closed for two years. When you drive by Old National Park, the gates are still locked. With this plan that we have now, can all of our buildings, not just the park land, but can all of our facilities, can all of our buildings be open by May first?
I can answer with regards to the repairs that we're doing on the buildings. We have to, unfortunately, we have inherited facilities that are in really bad conditions. When we go and repair a roof, we find more issues through our facilities. But also, as you know, early, a year and a half ago, the recommendations to retrofit all our facilities is over fifty million dollars, and we have about ten point three million dollars, which we're doing the best to do with the funds that we have. And on the budget for 2023 and five years out, we also have made recommendations to budget, if I'm not mistaken, about three million dollars on a yearly basis to bring all our, our facilities up to a better standing.
All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna close with this, we'll head to the next presentation, but it's been two years, and summer is coming. Our kids deserve to have access to these facilities this summer. So whatever we need to do, I understand that things can't be perfect. They have to be safe, so I'm not asking you to overlook mold. I know that we need HVACs in buildings like this, but let us not make the perfect the enemy of the good. Whatever we can do to get all of these buildings open, our kids have been on lockdown for two years, and we are seeing the effects of that. We need all of our park facilities open and staffed. So I do want to talk about that as well, but I'll yield for the next presentation.
So per the conversation, would you like to go into the master plan presentation to highlight some of the questions and comments that were mentioned earlier?
Absolutely.
And then we can come back to the staffing presentation for the other items on the agenda, if you prefer.
Okay.
So I'd like to introduce at this time Mr. Carlos Perez with Perez Planning, who has been addressing our master plan for the last couple of years. So at this time, I'll yield to him.
I wish I was as tall as Mr. Landrum. Good evening, Mayor, Council, Madam City Manager. Excited to be here this afternoon to share an update on the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Thank you for the opportunity. We're gonna, we're gonna go straight to the point of our presentation this evening, which revolves around funding and implementation. So the slide deck that you have in front of you, we got a little excited when we put it together, so there's a lot of slides there, but we're gonna go straight to key, key points to be efficient. So Mr. Adams, if you want to go to Slide Three, just to remind Mayor and Council about our process, right now, we're on Phase Four, which is implementation, wrapping up Phase Three, getting into Phase Four implementation. The product of Phase Three, you can see behind me in the back of the gym, we have three boards back there that shows the citywide Parks and Recreation System vision. So it identifies where parks are needed, that currently don't have parks, where community centers are needed and that are currently not served, where there's gonna be a series of recreation facilities proposed, right, based on the system vision, and then how all these elements are connected, right? Based on the citywide vision, and based on input from you, and based on input from the community, then we created individual conceptual park master plans for each of the city's parks, except for National, because we knew this was coming as well. So those are all included in the back for review and the folks here. We're also working, we're also working with Communications to share those concepts with all of you, so you can also share with your constituents, and then for them to provide input on those concepts. So we're really, really excited about that. So Mr. Adams, if you want to jump to Slide Twenty-One, because that's where we start talking about implementation. As we met with you early on in the process, we knew that this long-range vision was gonna be, was gonna have a lot of zeros behind it, right, in the tens of millions of dollars, because we're talking about a big park system and connecting them. So the question is, well, how can we implement that in a phased strategy? And the first answer to that is, well, how much money is available realistically? And what do we think we can leverage with grants and potentially philanthropic contributions? So that's one step. What can we, what can we do over the coming years? Number two, then, is to prioritize improvements. So we have a certain amount of money, and then how do we prioritize, how do we use that money on high priority projects? So that's what we want to focus on today. As a reminder, this is from the public input that we've used. What we heard from residents is that the importance of parks had increased since the pandemic, and there was a desire for many residents to increase the amount of park funding that had given, been considered for parks. And this is particularly important, because if we go to the next slide, you'll see how the city of South Fulton compares to other communities across the country. The bar in blue is city of South Fulton from a capital funding perspective, and you see compared to the other bars, where we're not as bad as the lowest bar, but there's opportunity for growth if we consider the other two bars that are there, right? The median and then the upper quartile of other communities across the country. That's from a capital perspective. If we go to the next slide, you'll see the same thing from an operations and management perspective. You see those bars, which is different years, 2019, or 2018, 2019, and 2020, the operations and maintenance per capita, per resident. And so you can see how that compares to other communities across the country, so there's an opportunity to increase funding there. So how do we do that? Well, we've worked with Mr. Ed Wall of Piper Sandler, that is a consultant to the city from a finance perspective, as well as Ms. Karen Sliden Dixon, on the next series of slides. Mr. Wall was not able to stay with us because he had another commitment. He was here before but had to go. So I'm not an expert in this. I know enough to be dangerous, so we're happy to come back and answer any specific questions that I may not be able to answer to you today. But it, this all starts with considering the existing financial conditions of the city. And as you know, there's, there's really two big funding opportunities. There's, there's using the tax income that we get for the city, and then there's a sploß, right? Those are the ones that cities typically use to fund these large projects. So what we've learned in looking at the millage rate of the city is that there's, there's an opportunity, there's some opportunity of millage remaining that could be used to fund Parks and Recreation projects. So you'll see some slides in the next series of slides that talk about that. Let's stay right there, Mr. Adam, just, just a few more points on the next one, on the previous one, Mr. Adam, sorry. So the idea here is that there's, there's about point five seven mills remaining that could be used to fund additional projects. But there's also an opportunity for Mayor and Council to consider increasing the millage of the city. And that's, if you look at other cities in the, in the South Fulton area, you can see that their mills are a little higher than ours. So there's an opportunity there to explore that. There's also the sploß. We have about a quarter of a cent remaining that through a process could potentially be explored to fund some of these projects. So let's, let's delve in a little bit into what we, we mean by this. If you go to the next slide, this is one potential funding opportunity for the, for Mayor, Council, and City to consider. And that's using a portion of that remaining mill to fund Parks and Recreation projects. If we were to use that full amount, as an example, if we were to use that full amount, it would generate about fourteen million dollars over ten years, right? Those dollars could be leveraged with grants and other philanthropic, potential philanthropic contributions. So we think that that could lead to a ten-year Phase One implementation of about twenty million dollars, right? That's, that's one option. If you go to the next slide, this looks at bonding that millage amount, right, which wouldn't require voter approval. That looks at voting that millage amount, and that would generate about twenty million, is that twenty-eight or twenty, twenty-eight, twenty-eight million over ten years, right? And then, again, we could leverage that with other grants, philanthropic contributions. So that's a potential Phase One of over thirty million dollars, right, that could be explored. If we go to the next option. The next option looks at a general obligation bond. One of the questions that we asked residents through this statistically valid survey was, would they be willing to pay additional taxes for improvements to the Parks and Recreation system? And what we learned through that process is that sixty percent of respondents said that they would be willing to pay one to five dollars per month to fund additional dollars for park improvements. So we worked with Mr. Wall and his team to see what that would look like in this project. So if you go to the next slide, you see some of those findings there, right? So one dollar over, over of additional tax revenue would create about fifteen million for a bond. Three dollars would create forty-two million, and five dollars would create about seventy million for, for a bond, and that's with a thirty-year payback. The example that we're using just, just for discussion is that three-dollar range, so that would generate about forty-two million. And if you go to the next slide, you see how it fits into that broader strategy, right, where we would leverage that with other funding sources, with other grants, and look for a Phase One, ten-year phase implementation of, what is that, fifty? Can't see it from here. Fifty-four million over ten years, right? So again, these are, these are just examples for consideration, for a future consideration, but what gives you an idea of, of how funding could be used to implement this long-range vision over the next series of years. The last example that we have for you is the, looking at that quarter sploß. If we go to the next slide. Oh, it's not. Yes, okay, here you go. So this is using that quarter cent of sploß that could generate about sixty million. And then you can see, combined with other funding sources, again, we would leverage that with other grants and philanthropic contributions, and that would generate about seventy-five million dollars. I think it's important to note that in order to use that partial cent, there would be a legislative process that we would have to go through and to be able to access those dollars. So that, that shows you a little bit about the funding strategies behind it, right? That's one component of implementation. The second one is prioritization, right? How do we then prioritize projects? So one opportunity that we're exploring, if you go to the next slide, is creating a two-phased implementation strategy. One looks at taking those dollars and allocating them to specific targets based on project types. For example, is a specific amount of dollars associated with improvements to existing parks, specific number of dollars allocated to the building of new facilities, specific amount of dollars allocated to trails, et cetera, and you'll see that in a moment. And then the next step to that is then using prioritization criteria to then score specific projects. So let's look at that first strategy, that funding allocation targets. If we go to the next slide, in the statistically valid survey, what we asked residents is, how would they spend a hundred dollars if they had on Parks and Recreation facilities? And so what we found was that thirty-five percent of respondents said that they would use that hundred dollars, or thirty-five of those dollars would go to improving existing facilities, thirty-three would go for the development of new facilities, twenty would go for the development of walking biking trails, and twelve percent would go to parkland acquisition. So one suggestion, one, one idea could be to use that capital money that we've identified, and then use these percentages to allocate those dollars, right?
I don't want to speed through this, this is so important, but we do, we're a little behind time.
Sure.
So we, yes, you got like, can you wrap it up in like three minutes?
Yes, absolutely. So this is one strategy to consider, right? Funding allocation targets, and you see how, how we're suggesting that could be done. If you go to the next slide, these are prioritization criteria. So each project would be scored with this criteria, and then we can identify which priority, which project should, should go first. So if you go to the next slide, next steps for us is to finalize the park plans that you see behind us. We're looking forward to getting comments from residents and from you, and updating those plans, updating costs and the phasing strategy, and then we'll look to finalize the report, and we hope to wrap up the project by April. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to any questions. Thank you for the opportunity to present.
All right, thank you. District One, Dr. Rowe.
Thank you for this presentation. I think between the last presentation and yours, it really speaks to the volume of investments that are needed in our park to get us where we want to be. I was looking at some of your financial projections, and like CDBG, it would take like our entire allocation of CDBG funds as we have them now. And so I know you talked about kind of the middle range to get to the forty-two. How long a period? I saw it said thirty years over a period of time. That's not how long the, so how, what's the period?
The period to use the funds?
No, well, how long would that be in place? If we, if we pass this plus, would it be five years, just like a, what's the period?
So if we're, if the sploß, and that's actually, Councilwoman Ryan, woman, I'd have to get back to you on that timeframe, because there is a legislative process specifically with the sploß.
Okay.
That may take a little more time, so we'd have to get back to you.
I know the public works ones are like five years, just curious about that. And you also pointed, I know you didn't go through all these slides, just a quick question. I know we are, we only have about point five seven, you said, to even entertain. We could possibly consider something different. That, that would require possibly a look at charter amendment if we went anything beyond that, because we're capped because of the charter, is that not correct?
That's correct. And so city mayor and city council could choose to change that through city charter and, and change, change to the city charter, correct?
Okay. Those were my just general questions. I'll probably have follow-up. It's a lot in this presentation, but thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Rowe. District Two, Councilman McGomes.
Yes, a quick question. I know we actually, I think, when was that, last month where we had the public engagement? All of that data that we got from the residents, where is that housed? Or is there a way that we can readily get our hands on it?
Sure, happy to. Yeah, we have all that information. We've typed it up and have it in our possession.
So before we get to, I guess, the, the financing piece, we will be able to see that and kind of determine and weigh in, you know, if there's something else that we would like to see throughout the city or in our districts, right? And are there any proposed new parks that are possibly coming throughout the city based off of the information that you gathered from the residents? Do we kind of pinpoint or put a pin in some areas?
Yes, we have areas identified where parks are needed and where they could go. Yes, we have areas identified where parks are needed and where they could go. Seldom do we go beyond that, because if we identify a particular property, we know that what that could happen with the value of land, right? So we typically just show an area and then show a need in that area, and then the master plan also includes prototypical designs of what those parks could look like, and that's something to be taken on in the future.
So all of the data that we gathered a few months ago, that is incorporated into the projected cost that we're discussing now?
The projected cost, we haven't finalized yet, but we know it's going to be, we put everything together, the trails, the new parks, the new community centers, would be in the hundreds of millions of dollars.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gomes. District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
So with the splosts, we would have to go to residents and have them, that would be legislation that would go, that's a referendum that would have to go on the ballot for residents to vote on, correct?
That's correct, that's part of the process.
Okay, and so if we do anything, I would prefer to go that route so that residents can have a voice and say, I don't, I'm not interested in changing the charter to give us the power to increase the millage rate higher than what it already is mandated. I think that could be a little problematic. I think that if we are going to do this, and I don't see how we are not going to be able to do this without some type of splosts, which is what I see most municipalities do, let the residents decide. You know, we make the case to residents while we're doing it, and all residents, I mean, they want to see park improvement, but let the residents decide on whether or not they want to pay the extra penny or whatever so that we can improve our parks.
Yeah, and just to clarify, the splosts would, changing those rules, right, would require to go to the borders. In terms of the charter for, from a millage rate perspective, my understanding is that may not have to go out to the borders, that could be by ordinance of city council.
Right, but when you're talking about changing the millage rate, you're talking about increasing property taxes.
That's correct.
And what I'm saying is, I don't want to make that decision to increase property taxes by changing the cap of the millage rate. I don't want to make that decision. I prefer for us to do some type of referendum so that all residents can vote on whether or not they want to pay additional costs to improve our parks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. District Four, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Yeah, I am a little uncomfortable with the idea of raising taxes. I was just thinking that to go to the residents of District Four and ask to raise taxes when we're complaining of not having facilities and proper parks in District Four already, it's a, it's a big ask. So I would love for them to make the decision, as Councilwoman Willis is saying, let them decide at the ballot box what happens.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian. District Five, Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Perez, as you know where I stand, so thank you for your conversations, for the sake of time.
District Six, Councilwoman Williams. District Seven, Dr. Baker.
Yes. It's been nearly, I don't know, about three and a half years since this legislation for the URA, I authored it, sponsored it, and we got seventeen million dollars. We had a retreat, I had a funeral, and when we divided that money up, when I came back, it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars left to acquire a park or land for a park in District Seven. I just saw as far as land acquisition being twelve percent if you gave some, if someone had a hundred dollars and they wanted to chop it up, but that's a person with a hundred dollars as opposed to a hundred and seven thousand individuals who are trying to figure out what they're going to do, especially with the population in District Seven where the Shady Park Crips and Creole Road is adjacent. I just saw that number that I know is three hundred plus be two hundred and thirty-two thousand point five, and I don't remember this body voting to change the number. I saw it equal to that in District Four for land acquisition, I believe. And I'm just curious, when did that number change? Because I've been having, from, when did that number decrease to two hundred thirty-two point five?
All right, Dr. Baker, I think you are referring to the URA, which was the previous presentation. I thought you were going somewhere about.
He had it on this, on his presentation.
Well, I'm going to bring up, can we bring up Madam City Manager? I don't want to bring him up, can we bring him up? Bring up Mr. Valens Wayward?
Yes, sir, that's fine.
All right.
Council Baker, the funds for rights acquisition that we have for your district as well as for District Two, and I believe one more district, those funds stayed the same, we didn't touch it. So it, while it was allocated and approved originally, they remain the same. They were set aside for the purpose of acquiring the land.
So, I mean, if we could talk, well, no, it was over three hundred thousand dollars, and I know I just saw two thirty-two point five, and that's the only reason I'm asking this question. Like, the numbers have changed based off land acquisition amounts for District Seven for a park. It's not the same as it was when we made the final vote of where those funds were going to be allocated. Because I was really, really highly upset, as well as the people in my district, that we only had a little bit over three hundred thousand dollars to acquire land. And I've been working with people trying to do three P partnerships to assist in this process, knowing that we had over, a little bit over three hundred thousand, and that's almost seventy thousand dollars short. I mean, we met with Mr., I mean, my son is probably your height now, last time we met, because I know he was a contributing factor to this plan, and we were talking about the three hundred, and I believe approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
We'll make sure that we provide to you a report on that, but we have not authorized to move anything for lands acquisition. You have one for you, one for Council Reeves, and another one for Council Gomes.
I just encourage you to just go back and look and just make sure those numbers are correct. Because I've quoted it over and over and it's committed to memory, I appreciate it. And thank you for all this work. I don't even know how you work on the same project for so many years, but thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Baker. We actually haven't had a URA, an official URA meeting in over a year. So let's, I would ask that we have a URA meeting when we have our mid-year budget review, let's just make sure that we have a URA, a separate URA meeting, even though it's the same body. Let's, I just want to advise everybody that we will probably be putting that on the calendar. I will work with you, Madam City Manager, and Mr. City Clerk to make sure that we have a URA meeting of the body specifically on the calendar. I do have one question. It does look like the splosts generated the most funds, I think I saw sixty million there. Splosts have to be shared with the other fifteen cities in the county and the county itself. Was that sixty million dollar number a projection of our portion of the splosts or what, the entire twenty-five cent?
My understanding from Mr. Wall is that it would be a portion for the city.
Okay, that is awesome, but let's, let's check that. All right. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. If you were, if you were, if we were ready to transition.
Yes.
To the next thing I wanted to offer, that perhaps, given that we're running about an hour behind at this point, if we could table the rest of this so that, I don't know who's here to speak, you know, for some of these zoning issues, but if we could get some of, get these, get this done.
All right, so, thank you for that point of order. We got a point of order on the floor, let me just deal with this point of order. Clerk Adams, would you, you know, illuminate the council on where we are with the four zoning requests and the two zoning requests? How many cases will we be hearing tonight?
Yes, the printed agenda had four alcohol license public hearings, those all have been removed from the agenda, leaving two zoning cases, one Z twenty-one dash zero one six, and as well as Z twenty-one dash zero one four and CV twenty-one dash zero zero eight. Those are only two items on the zoning agenda this evening.
All right, Councilwoman Willis has one more question, so I am going to come back to that, but can I just get the pleasure of the council, can we, after her question, can we table these parks discussions for a few minutes to hear these two zoning cases?
Mayor, the appropriate action would be just to motion to recess this meeting and convene the zoning, hear the zoning, then reconvene this particular.
All right, well, after this question from Councilwoman Willis, I will entertain that motion, but I do want to just wrap this up. We got to, let's, first of all, is everyone's cue working? I haven't been using the cue, I've just been going down the line, but it. Okay, sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't. So, Councilwoman Willis.
Don't we have another round of URA funding coming, or is this it?
From my understanding, this is it.
Okay, so we've allocated, okay, so I recall, Mr. Vanswellis, didn't you meet with each of us, I mean, I had a meeting, and we went over all of our URA projects and the timing of completion and what was allocated in the URA per our district. I recall meeting with you last year, and you said that meeting was going to be done for everybody on council. Did you, did you get a chance to do that?
On, on a follow-up meeting? We didn't have that follow-up meeting, but at this point, we are, we are ready to disclose everything, where we are in every single project as well as on the financials.
Okay, and then, I just want to clear up two things and then we can move on. One, one of the reasons we did this Irma redevelopment authority, and there were two legislations, there was one that Councilmember Baker sponsored, and then there was one that I wrote. The one that Councilmember Baker wrote required that the South Woods Development Authority oversee it. The one that I wrote, it designated us to be the authority members, us being the council. So we came to a compromise to make that happen, and we thought that would be best because we speak to our residents and we wanted to make sure we were advocating for what was best for our area that we govern. The main reason for this URA was to make sure when we transitioned from the county, we inherited a lot of problems. Blight, blighted buildings, some of our fire stations were blighted, were disrepair, mold, and parking recreation. So we did this URA to bring our current assets into compliance. So that's why you see roofing done, that's why you see, I mean, Fire Station One was totally renovated, and so while we knew that this was not going to be enough money to do everything that we wanted to do, but we had to prioritize, and then we had to bring the buildings and assets we currently do have into compliance. We had to do mold remediation and roof repairs and a lot of things. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was put out for the record. We're not trying to slight anyone's district, but unfortunately, we got what we got when we transitioned from the county, and we needed to put the money into facilities that was never repaired and maintained on the county government side. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sebastian? All right, so right now, I'm going to entertain a motion to recess this meeting so that we can do the zoning meeting.
I moved to recess the meeting.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I just have discussion for the audience, this doesn't mean, we're going to finish the parks presentation, but we just need to take a pause because we're about an hour behind in our meeting, we're going to take a pause to hear two zoning cases, and then we'll be returning back to this very important topic. And with that, would you roll call the vote, please?
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
We are recessed at six fifty-six PM.
All right, I will take a motion to call this zoning hearing to order.
You call it to order, and I can do the roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Your Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Your Honorable Catherine F. Rowe, District One.
Present.
Your Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
Your Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Your Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
Your Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Warren.
Your Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six. And Your Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
All right, so on the first item?
First item is Item Five on the printed agenda, Z twenty-one dash zero one six, request rezoned from AG One to CUP for thirty-six single-family homes located at Zero West Stubbs Road and Thirty-three Fifteen West Stubbs Road. This is located in District Two.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for this. We'll ask everyone that is for to stand on this side of the room, on your left, my right. Everyone that is against, please stand on the right side of the room, your right, my left, is the applicant present? Okay, the applicant is coming forth, you will be first on the fore side, please put ten minutes on the clock. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Dani Blumenthal, I'm with Battle Law PC, thirty-five sixty-two Hebert Sham at Northlake in Tucker. I appreciate you all being here this evening and listening, but I do request that we defer this matter so it is heard next month alongside a, another case that is related to this matter.
All right, is there anyone else for, to speak for the matter? All right, anyone against? All right, we're going to, go ahead.
Me.
We're, I'm going to close this part of the hearing, then we're going to go to the council. This is in District Two, go ahead, Councilwoman Gomes.
Is, Dani, is this something new?
The other matter, you mean?
Yes.
So that's the zoning modification for Phase One of the development, which there are to change the conditions of, I think it's Z twenty zero zero eight?
These are the conditions that we discussed, the cleanup, the?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, all right. So do I just go ahead and say that we'll accept the deferral? I make a motion to accept your deferral to the next meeting.
Madam, there's also a, the staff report should have come, and then the speaker, so I think before you make that motion, you might want to hear from the staff.
I will rescind my motion.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead, staff.
Good evening. We are recommending the deferral as well. This application is accompanying a related application that had a delay in advertising, so they are going to be, we would prefer if they were heard together, so we're in acceptance of the, and recommend the deferral.
Okay.
Thank you, so we'll be hearing this on April the twelfth?
All right, so I will have to probably make my motion again. All right, so I will have to probably make my motion again, I will go ahead and accept the deferral for April the twelfth, two thousand and twenty-two, can I get a second?
Second, so move.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call vote to defer, Councilmember Ryle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
That item is deferred unanimously.
Thank you.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is Item Six, Z twenty-one dash zero one four and CV twenty-one dash zero zero eight, it's request to rezone three parcels from A G One and T R to O N I for the expansion of a nursing home facility, request variances to reduce the side yard on the south property line to thirty feet, to reduce the landscape strip to forty feet on the southeastern property corner, and to reduce the Cliftondale Landscape Buffer to thirty feet on the south property line to allow the existing front yard parking, this is located in District Four.
Do we wanna start with staff first this time? Thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, so this request is for three parcels to be rezoned, one being currently zoned T R, Townhouse Residential, and then the other two being zoned agricultural, A G One, and the applicant is wishing to rezone the properties for the purpose of an existing nursing home facility, as well as the expansion, some of it currently specified, and some of it, you know, future unknown expansion onto two parcels to the north, the application would require a future land use map amendment if they proceed, there is a portion of the property that is on the future land use map designated Community Live Work, but the majority of the three parcels is located within the rural neighborhood future land use character area, so staff has recommended a series of alterations to the conditions from the original zoning case when this property was zoned to the T R District, and so you've received a more comprehensive set of conditions from that original zoning case, where we've stricken through what would be altered in this request, and so this list enumerates the, the various changes to that original zoning that we would recommend, so I'll enumerate those for you, the first being that the site be limited to one curb cut as a recommendation from our transportation team, that the site be submitted in accordance with the site plan, or that the site be compliant with the site plan, but also accommodating future development, that it not exceed one hundred thousand square feet total in any future development, that the facility have no more than a hundred fifty beds, it, it's no more than max one story, and that there are, there's a series of amenity areas, I will note that at the February Planning Commission meeting, Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval with staff's conditions, but there was some conversation that indicated maybe some of the Planning Commission members were amenable to a, a two-story and thirty-five-foot height for condition number five, but that was not manifest in the condition itself. All right, as you can see in red, the three parcels, the one farthest to the south is currently what's developed as the nursing home facility, and the, there's a series of variances they're requesting as well, one for the Cliftondale Overlay Buffer, one for Landscape Buffer, one for a buffer there on the, on the south, southern corner, and then one for the setback, those physically are not going to change anything, that they are allowed to develop as is, those are just to accommodate going from the T R zoning district to the O I zoning district that has more aggressive setbacks and buffering requirements, so any new development would occur to the north, and they would be compliant with the development standards in those areas, so as you can see on the left, the pink area is the live-work character area, and then the rural neighborhood is in the yellow, so the need to change that designation, and then on the right is the zoning map, the T R is in the yellow, in the existing developed area, and then the green is the agricultural zoning designation. This is a current site plan with that development to, to the south, and you can see the, the undeveloped parcels to the north. And then the proposed development would include the consolidation of those three lots into the one development tract, retention of the existing building, expansion there to the north, and expansion of the parking lot, and of course, the variances are occurring on that far southern parcel, where there, there would not be any proposed physical changes to the, to the, that portion of the property. So staff recommends approval of both the rezoning and the concurrent variances, and again, concurrent with this, there would need to be a zoning map amendment as well, so, thank you, I'll be here for questions.
All right, thank you, I'm gonna open the public hearing now, anyone, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, and anyone for, again, please be on this, your left, my right, anyone against, please be on your right, my left, we're gonna go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, I did send in a presentation, are we able to?
Uh, who did you send that to?
I believe to Marissa Jackson.
I don't think they forwarded that to me, I'm sorry.
Okay, would I be able to just get up, I guess, the, the conditions that we had up there? Thank you, so again, good evening, and, and thank you for, for hearing me, Danny Blumenthal with Battle Law P C, of course, the applicant here is seeking to rezone these parcels, they do own all of them, again, are operating a nursing facility on the southern most of the three parcels, there's not any immediately, immediate proposal to be expanding, except for the expansion that I sent, it should be in your packets, there's just some new rooms, it's not to be for more residents, it's just to eliminate some of the shared rooms right now in the nursing facility, so that some of those residents will have their own bedroom moving forward after the expansion, and then also to allow for some more parking, because right now, they're a bit short in the parking, so, we are happy to oblige to all of these conditions that staff proposed, we've been working with them quite a bit, the only, and I, I won't read them all for you, 'cause we just went through them, but the only kind of issue that we had was with the, it's number five on this list up here, about the height, this property is in the Cliftondale Overlay District, which has a thirty-five-foot maximum building height, so I don't really see why we would not, you know, having it two stories, so we're not looking for three stories, so if we could change that to no more than two stories, we would still be below the thirty-five-foot maximum height in the overlay district, but besides that, I'd like to just thank you again, and I know there's no vote this evening, but I do ask that when that time comes, that, that you approve this proposal, thank you.
All right, any other speakers for? Any other speakers, any speakers against? Going once, going twice.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to state for the record that we did receive some written comments that I will be forwarding to the council in a normal format, you know, with the...
Can you just tell me, how many do we have?
I think, I believe, there were two, two comments regarding zoning cases.
If there are just two, can we read those, are they about this particular?
Yeah, I don't know if they're about this particular case, but I can...
Well, no, only if they're about this case, just because we've heard this publicly, I wanna make sure that those people who took the time to send in comments, if they are about this case, that we do hear them now.
Yeah, this is regarding Spence Road, which I don't think, I don't think it is.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and turn it over to council, I believe this is in District Four, so, Councilman Sebastian, did you wanna start?
Yes, I, I got involved, of course, on this project closer to, in, sort of in the middle of it, obviously, and the conditions that are there seem to be consistent with, one, the initial meeting that we had, and two, I had asked the applicants to go back and meet with the Cliftondale Group, and I believe they did, and they went over all, all of this, all of these conditions, however, item number five, I do not recall us having a discussion around that, so I'd love staff to tell me why is it that they were suggesting it be more than one story, because I think when we met with the Cliftondale Group, it was generally understood that it may have to be two stories.
So you're asking why one story?
Yes.
I think that's retained from the, the prior conditions, the, the T R, the T R conditions, so, so we carried that over, so that it would be a one-story facility. And, and then I think the conversations came up as altering it to a two-story facility at the Planning Commission meeting.
Well, as was suggested, the, the, the Cliftondale Overlay does allow up to thirty-five feet, and I believe what was said about the planning, the members of the Planning Commission, that they were not hard and fast set on this one story, so I would just, I would recommend that we take this one out, or just add it, limit it to two.
Sure.
And, and so it makes it easier for us to, to move on with it, otherwise than that, it's, it's fine, it, the facility's needed, the expansion is needed, and as I said, I called some of the residents around there together to meet with us and the Cliftondale Group with the applicant, so we've, we've been through this a few times, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right, are there any other comments? Questions, comments, concerns, queries, all right, I wanna go ahead and make a motion to, I'm sorry, I want to entertain a motion to close this hearing and return back to the recessed work session.
I move that we close the zoning hearing and return to the work session.
I think we had to, from the last meeting, we had to separate those motions, one to adjourn this meeting, and then reconvene the, the next meeting.
Then I, I move that we adjourn the zoning hearing.
Second.
All right, roll call District?
Roll call vote to adjourn the zoning public hearing, Councilmember Ryle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
We adjourned at seven thirteen P M.
I move to reconvene the work session.
So move.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote to reconvene the work session, Councilmember Ryle.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes, and with thanks to our mayor for allowing our guests to present their case, so they could go have dinner.
Yes, ma'am, Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
We are reconvened at seven fourteen P M.
All right, could we pick it up with the staffing plan?
We need a five minutes, I move that we have a five-minute break.
Wait a minute, that's not how it works, there is a point of order for a break, now I will entertain a motion.
I move that we have a five-minute break.
So move.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned till seven twenty. We're recessed till seven twenty, thank you.
The break.
Before I continue through the rest of this presentation, I wanted to ask, because I noticed you have also information related to the park ranger staffing plan, which Deputy Chief Rogers is available to speak to that as it falls under the PD. Would you like to pause there and take any questions as it relates to that before we go to the next items?
Let's, let's, are you through with this staffing? I'm gonna ask you, just give me like sixty more seconds on this staffing so that we can ask you questions about park staffing and then we'll come back to the park rangers.
Okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood that.
I'll give you about sixty seconds to finish this presentation on park staffing and then we'll take some questions before we go to the park rangers.
Yes, sir. That concludes the park staffing aspect.
All right. District one?
Yes, as it relates to trying to get our facilities open, I know there are a number of positions that are currently advertised. How are we coming with hiring is my first question. And are funds allocated in the budget? Or do we have to do it with the budget, mid-year budget to bring these staff positions online?
The initial question, I'm sorry, if you could repeat that, please.
I want, I know we had a number of positions advertised on the website. How are we coming with hiring? And do we have money budgeted for those positions or based on what you showed us, do we have to put more positions in the mid-year budget?
Okay. We are working with HR to seek to get these positions that we currently have advertised filled. We're facing the same challenge as a lot of other departments. As these positions are available, the market is in the favor of the candidates. So you have neighboring agencies that have similar or like positions available and they have their, the pick of their, their choice when it comes down to these positions and opportunities. It definitely is prevalent more so in our maintenance operation, given that they have other areas like waste management, they, that fields and other areas fields they can go into. But we are currently continuing to work with, with HR to get these positions filled and hopefully we'll be able to continue to have those efforts for the positions that we currently have. For the ask that we would have upcoming, those are not currently in our budget. Those would be positions that we seek out during the mid-year. And then, of course, the other positions that we were interested in would be a request coming up for the upcoming budget year as well.
Okay. And finally, what's realistic, based on where we are now, about how many of these facilities we're really gonna be able to get open? Do you think? I know we can want it, but I know that's not realistic based on some of the things you said from staffing.
Correct.
What capacity do you think we could get to?
Well, the most realistic is, as I mentioned earlier in, in conversation with, with Mr. Valenzuela and Mr. Smith, the one that can be the most immediate would be Creel Park, given that the URA project for that is the replacement with the condensers and the AC unit there. Given with our other facilities, if we go through the slated URA projects, there are other layers that are required to complete the work, specifically as we spoke about Sandtown.
Well, no, I don't want anybody to go in that building to his rights.
Okay, so I think on some of those presentations that they provided, I saw the reflection of like late 2022 in some of the timelines. But that was speaking to that project specifically, not taking into consideration the extra layer or additional work that might be necessary for it as well. So for the most part, I can only speak to Creel Park specifically being one that I know we could have open in the immediate future. But the other ones, because they have extra layers, it would be hard to identify that timeline.
But again, the key thing, even if we only have Creel open and that's the one we could kind of move quickly on, the reality is we will have some recreation going in the outdoor parks regardless if we're not even in those buildings. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. There's a part of the presentation that'll come up later that speaks to it as it relates to our user agreements with youth associations and other vendors. So opportunities will be available in our park system.
Thank you.
District two?
I don't know if you, if you missed this or if I missed it, whatever. Did we say how many parks are open and how many are under renovation? Just for the edification of the public, because we do get a lot of questions on social media in regards to that.
So to, to provide some clarity, all of our parks are open with the condition that up until recent conversation, Old National was locked on a regular basis during the day. So we have communicated with staff to, to start having that park open. And the reason for it being locked was because of the high volume of, of damage and graffiti that would take place out there. But we have communicated and that park will be available throughout the day for public access. So to answer the question, all of our parks are open and to make that a truer statement, Old National will be accessible now during the day. And as it, as mentioned before, some of our facilities are still impacted, but the parks themselves are open.
And can you share how many parks are actually under renovation that are not, I guess, taken in people, residents? Like for instance, Clifton Dell, my understanding, and a few others.
So specifically, our facilities that are under renovation would be Clifton Dell, that would be Sandtown, and of course Creel Park that's on there. Those are facilities that are under renovation. We don't currently have any park as far as dirt moving or anything. We don't have any parks that are closed for renovations, just the facilities.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to put you on the hot seat so we get off the hot seat. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
District three, Councilman Willis?
Thank you, Mr. Landry, for this presentation. Mr. Landry, can we do some kind of, can you work with communications and do some kind of robust marketing? That our parks are open with the hours of operation, what programs we have. I know I have, that's information has been sent to us, but it needs to be some kind of way put out in the public. I know you all have a park and recreation social media site. But for some reason, people are thinking our parks are closed. And the other question I have, will we have summer camps this year?
Yes, ma'am. We currently are slated to host summer camps at Birdette and at Welcome Mall. And then, I'm sorry, and then, of course, there will also be installation of camps at the Southwest Arts Center as they did last year as well.
Okay. So I got a call about the tennis and I got a complaint that, from a tennis parent, that we don't have proper programming for tennis and proper coaching staff for tennis. I got that call yesterday. And so what is going on with the tennis?
So as highlighted on one of the previous slides, that's why the South Fulton Tennis Center is one of the priorities that we would like to have implemented with the ask of additional staff. Because we do need specialized staff. We are working with USTA to get assistance on going forward with how to move forward with qualified staff in those areas. So we do have an athletic position in our inventory that we are hoping to transition to the South Fulton, to, and I can't say South Fulton, to a tennis center manager to get that advertised and we want to advertise that appropriately with the assistance from them. So we don't have the staff over there now, of course, with the transition of, that we've had there recently. But we are working and that's why that is a prioritized facility because of the need to, to have those adequate skills over there in that facility.
So will we have something in place by May, June? Because they had at one time a robust tennis summer camp program over there. And I probably will want to work with you to have a, a meeting with the parents over there, because they've been reaching out to me so we can, you know, be transparent and let them know everything that's going on. But we have a huge tennis community. That, that facility is heavily utilized. They had over a hundred kids over there in summer camp. And we need to make sure that we can, we're ready for them when school is out. And lastly, the youth football leagues, are we gonna keep the same model for now? Because I know at one time we were looking at bringing it in-house, but for now, because of the staffing, are we looking at keeping that same model?
Yes, ma'am. That is a part of the presentation that'll come up later. Since my arrival here, I would say that it would, with this particular sport, it would be in the best interest or best practice to continue that model with youth, youth associations, given the liabilities and the other assets and needs for an in-house operation for that sport, housing the equipment, other, other, other components that would take, take need for that program. I would definitely highly recommend that we continue the football offering to be offered through a third party such as the youth associations.
So what I would ask is that you do a very good job with vetting who's over these programs. I'm not saying they all are bad, but, and I'm not, you know, I appreciate anybody who volunteer and work with our kids, but what we can't have is some of the incidents that we have seen and incidents that have made media, because even though they are youth athletic associations, they still tie it back to the city of South Fulton. And we need to make sure we're doing background checks. We need to make sure we're doing training. I have legislation coming down the pipe to make sure that heat-related training is mandated. And we try to get some of these tubs at all of the facilities to address heat-related injuries. Because I don't want another incident to happen that happened in 2016. So I have an offline conversation with you. I welcome football back into our parks. I just want it to be fun for the kids and, and I want it to be respectful and, and that's it.
Yes, ma'am.
District four, Councilman Sebastian. District five, Mayor Pro Tem Reeves.
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Yeah, tennis. He said one tennis center manager, center manager, or we need two?
So one of the recommendations provided by USTA is that we could have, one of the models was to have a tennis center manager and then, of course, additional staff such as program coordinators. But then also still have an RFP go out for a tennis pro to make sure that we have that liaison to oversee the operations of what the tennis pro is doing. And they can handle the inner workings on the city side as it relates to the operations of the facility. So that was just one of the positions I highlighted in the presentation earlier, but.
Well, Mr. Landry, I say that because we have a great facility right across the street that just needs a little bit of ten to eleven care. As a little known fact, CoCo Golf used to play right over there. So I think that it's deserving to this community that we get that up to speed and, what do they call it, equity, equitable as to our other facilities as well, as I would like to see a pro shop in there too. And so however you do it or however that will be done, we would like that to be addressed as well.
Yes, sir.
District six, Councilman Willis.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor. The only question I have is, as it relates to Creel Park, do you perhaps have a projected timeline for when we might be able to get that building back open? Or if you don't want to say that's fine, because I know people will, you know, take whatever you say and run with it, but summer, fall, roundabout?
Fingers crossed for the summer. I'm hoping that the projected timeline that is in, in that presentation for the URA is not impacted by suppliers not being able to provide the, the equipment. But fingers crossed, summer, and we'll hope prior to. But I, I don't have that presentation pulled up, but.
No, that, that's, that's fine. Okay, thank you.
All right. I've got a couple of questions. Dr. Baker didn't have any questions. The first is, I was, I was pulling up these NRPA stats, because we've talked a lot about staffing levels in other departments. My understanding is there's supposed to be eight point two full-time staff people for every 10,000 residents. We have over 100,000 residents, so we should have over eighty full-time staff people in parks, according to the National Parks Recreation Association. How many full-time employees do we have working in our parks department now?
So as we, this conversation was brought up during the new council orientation and we are definitely at a deficit. I think based off of the standards in NRPA, I think the full-time equivalent was like ninety-eight that we should be at. And at the time, we're like currently now at forty-two, I think at a max.
So we're, we're, we're like half the staff that we need to be. What is, when will we get to ninety-eight? Like, do we have a plan to get there in two years, three years, ten years, one year?
Well, that's where the immediate ask that we're having now for, for staffing and then this is what we definitely hope to build over time and budget requests with the upcoming budget year. So I would hope the sooner the better. But we're, we're hopeful with at least a minimum of two years that we could be at that level.
All right. I, I would, yes, I, I would like to see a plan brought forth for our, both for our mid-year budget and our 2023 budget to get our staffing up for our parks. Because again, what we've seen on the news is that when our kids do not have outlets, you know, they get into things and then it spills over into our schools. We've seen that at a couple of our schools this year. The, I'm just gonna ask a, a, a couple of staffing questions and this is why I think staffing is so important. I'm just gonna go down the gamut and you can respond to them all. But so Old National, we're going to open the gates. But will we have staff? Because you say there's a vandalism problem. Same thing for Creel Park. The building is going to be ready, but will we have staffing in the building? We had, we used to have in this building, we used to have senior line dancing. That has not happened. We had a great track and field program. We are standing on this floor where we had the Elbert Outlaw Classic, which did not happen this year. So it's not enough that we just have the building open and we got one or two programs. How do we get back to at least the level of staffing that we had pre-COVID? We had this award-winning track and field team and we had a basketball team here that always went to the state championship. For the first year this year, they did not go. And we find out that half the kids that are playing are now playing for College Park because we have been so understaffed and so late in opening up our, you know, our facilities. And so I would like to get to ninety in two years, but I would like by the end of this year, is it possible that by the end of this year that we could get to pre-COVID staffing levels where we just had the programs that we used to have? Now talking about additional programs, but in Creel Park, we had Future Secrets and Transforming Youth. So those were programs that we outsourced to other people that ran them for our kids. Like I said, we had line dancing here that was taught by community members and they just need a space. How do we get back to that?
So of course, the, the ripple effect from COVID still lingers with our, with our department. We're in the model of being able or to trying to do more with less. With the other facilities being closed, that has allowed us to take the staff that was traditionally at those facilities and utilize them in the facilities that are open. So to your question, as it relates to Old National and Creel, the park itself, because we don't have a facility at those parks, we would rely on the visibility of our park maintenance staff as they go through. And then, of course, the assistance with the PD and the park rangers. Because we don't have a, a facility at those parks to have somebody there throughout the duration of the day. Of course, if there's a structured program taking place, that the staff would be on site during that time. But we currently don't have a, any infrastructure to, to have people at those parks during the hours of operations. And similar with our other parks that don't have breaking mortar at it as well. Trying to get back to the levels that we were at before, of course, we'll continue to push with the recruiting efforts with HR. We'll push the efforts, of course, with GRPA and we can also reach out and have our information on NRPA to produce a larger candidate pool. But again, we're just continuing to fight the, the same challenge with a competitive market with neighboring agencies to trying to recruit the same employees and same people. But those are the efforts and steps that we can take to try and get back to that level pre-COVID.
Are, are, are you saying, now, I hate to put you on the spot, but are you saying that we might need to look at our salary offerings? Are our salary offerings not competitive with other parks agencies?
I think, well, just to give you an example specifically, it depends on the position and it depends on the, the salary itself, the benefits aspect. One of the positions that we looked at recently, park maintenance specifically, that position entry level is paying at a rate of fifteen. We looked up a similar light position. I want to say it was in Villa Rica or one of the other neighboring areas. And that position in the same vein was paying eighteen an hour. So I understand, I think the city had a pay and comp study done recently. Of course, that would always be something that would be beneficial to look at those positions and assess them to help recruit for the area. But that is one of the challenges that we have.
All right. And lastly, Mayor Pro Tem was, was more polite, but I'm gonna be more explicit. What is the, we, we, we heard a lighting proposal for the South Fulton Tennis Center. What is the lighting and staffing proposal for the Birdette Park Tennis Center? I get calls all the time that this place is always closed.
So to the, the statement that Mayor Pro Tem Reeves mentioned, this would be an opportunity with that facility, with it not having consistent operation, similar to our parks or, or with our pavilions. If there's a request and interest for the public to use it, I can't remember the community advocate that was over here. She, she spoke with us frequently about pickleball and tennis. If the interest is to use those facilities in the same manner as a pavilion, we can make staff available and access to the facility. But given that that operation is not on the same level as a South Fulton Tennis Center, that's why we don't have staff housed there. But it will and could be available made upon request for the community if they have interest in utilizing it.
So are the courts only open upon request?
No, the court should be open throughout the day. It's just the facility itself would not be available. And I know as it relates to some altar teams or USTA teams, they do like to utilize that facility when they have their matches there. So I think some of those have transitioned over to the tennis center before, I think that was like October, November. But when they were over here, they would have that request in, they would give us their schedule of their tennis matches and we would give them access to the facility during that time.
All right, thank you.
So if there's no further questions, I'm sorry, do we want to go ahead and jump into the park ranger staffing?
Sure.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Background and recruitment, we're aggressively recruiting and trying to fill all our vacancies to include park rangers. I currently have three individuals in the FTO program who will be released within the next two months. Park rangers, in order for me to release somebody and reassign from patrol, I have to have a body to replace. So as they're coming out of the FTO program and those newly FTO graduates going to patrol, I can pull from patrol and assign them to a specialized unit. So one of those three bodies, park rangers will get.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with the questions this time. So we, we have how many park rangers?
Only three, only three FTOs that are in the FTO program who just graduated mandate. But in order for me to fill a park ranger position, I have to take somebody off patrol. As we know, patrol is the backbone of the police department. I can't move a body until I have a body to replace.
All right. Have, have we looked into, so we have, we have three FTOs in seventeen parks. So have we looked, I, I've, I've had this conversation before, but I, we've talked to Miami, I've talked to folks in San Diego. They are hiring park rangers who are not post-certified police officers. They are paid less. They have, they have less training. They, they share radio. So in Miami Beach, they share radios. They're actually code enforcement officers. So they're able to get two officers for one. Is that a model that we have looked at?
When we attend our job fairs, we, actually, that is an option that is given. Myself and background in recruitment, we're actually going to Montgomery, Alabama in April on a job fair. And those are things that are put out for people who are interested, who may not want to be an actual police officer and answering 911 calls, but they can come on and be a park ranger.
Awesome. All right. District one? District two?
No questions.
District three?
So we have three, we only gonna have three designated park rangers?
No, no, no. I only have three individuals who's in the FTO program. When I, when they graduate, I'm gonna reassign somebody from patrol to park ranger and they'll take their place. But I can't do that until they actually complete the program.
So how many total park rangers do we have?
We'll have, at that time, we'll have three. And it's constantly, the staffing is constantly, but I can't, patrol is the backbone. And although parks is important, I can't move a body from patrol to give to parks until I have the necessary staff to do so.
Okay. Ms. Sally Jones, three park rangers are not enough because last year, not last year, two years ago, when, when parks were open full-fledged, if something popped, popped off at Welcome Mall and something popped off at, at, at Birdette or Creel, I mean, our police officers were stretched trying to get, I mean, and that's not, that's not a short distance. So if we're gonna have park rangers, we gotta do it right. And we have, those are large parks and I'm not even, and even Tremell Crowe, in the summertime, our parks get busy. And there is an attempt in all of our parks in the summertime to bring lawlessness to our parks because so much has been tolerated for so long. And three park rangers are not enough. So I would ask that you get with Chief Meadows when he returns. And we need to triple, triple that number. Like, we need park rangers designated for each park.
We, we definitely understand. It's just the staffing, we're hiring and recruiting and hiring officers, getting them trained and then replacing them.
I understand and I'm not, and that's why I'm addressing it to the city manager, because it's her job to work with the, with the department head to effectuate what this council desires. And so Ms. Sally Jones, what I'm asking you to do is figure out, get with Chief Meadows. We need park rangers assigned to each park. We need park rangers at Welcome Mall assigned. We need park rangers assigned at Tremell. We need park rangers assigned at.
Sandtown.
Sandtown. We need park rangers assigned at Creel Park. We need park rangers assigned at Birdette Park. We need park rangers, I mean, active parks. I'm not talking about parks that are not active. But I know that Sandtown is active, Tremell is active, Welcome Mall is probably the most utilized. And then you have Creel and you have Birdette. Those parks are very active. Old National, yeah, that's right. Pleasantale. I mean, it got, it has to happen.
I, I can definitely get with the chief, but can you address, what are you all doing to cover the deficit of your park rangers? Do you have to use patrol officers to go to, into those parks?
A lot of, our patrol officers, when they're in those sectors, when they're not actively on a call, they go and check parks. Cops helps out a lot with the park rangers because they know they are understaffed. So they work very effectively together.
Okay. But I'll, I'll talk to the chief when he gets back.
It gotta happen, because, I mean, I'm telling you, it's always. I'll let my other colleagues express. I mean, even, even Mayor. Even Mayor can tell you, I mean, in the summertime, it gets crazy. And we gotta do something. And that's, I'm gonna leave it like that. I'm gonna let everybody else talk in. But I know I'm not the only one who have this observation.
Thank you, Councilman Willis. District four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was actually waiting on, on your presentation, Deputy Chief, because even though a park like Cedar Grove is not very active, I have received complaints about activities in that park, right, especially during the night. And it's one of those parks that currently cannot be locked. So I'm hoping over time that we will figure out ways, not only to put more rangers in it, but if we have particular hours, that the park needs to be closed. It should be closed. We, I don't know how many eyes we have on Wilkes-Barre, that's like at the end of the city, right? But yes, we really do need some more eyes on places like Cedar Grove, even though they're not, they're not very active parks because of people who do use them, whether it's just the walking or sometimes walk, even walking their dogs. They do complain about some of the activities and some of the evidence that's left behind by some of the activities that go on in that park.
And I'll take that information back to my community service commander and we'll sit down, we'll come up with a strategy that I think you'll be most appreciative of.
District five?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Yeah, I, I love our park ranger program.
Yeah, I, I love our park ranger program, we'd love if we can have more. Um, but yeah, as you see, we're having our facility, so, uh, programs, 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 I'm about the programs, and so, um, thank you, that's all.
District Six?
Um, I believe, I believe my comment is going to be more for our city manager because we sit through presentation after presentation, um, where two things are very apparent. One, we don't have enough money, and two, we don't have enough staff anywhere in the city. And so what I think I want to ask of the city manager is, can we, um, I guess in the next thirty days, by the time we get to the April work session, is it possible to go department by department and get a full and complete report of what every department needs in terms of staff, and what it's going to cost us? Um, because we cannot just keep trying to piecemeal together. We need staff here, we need staff there. We need a complete, full accounting of what's needed and how much it's going to cost us so that we can start to approach this in a systematic fashion, um, where we are not trying to have four, five, six-hour meetings to wade through, you know, this level of minutia. Um, you know, I would, I would much prefer to be able to have something that I can look at in a very comprehensive and cohesive way, um, that can guide us in making some decisions about where we're gonna get the money from, if the money can be had, and what we can realistically do, so that we can begin to address some of these problems. Um, so if, if, um, city manager, if you could please note that, um, as an action item, and if you could bring that to us at the April work session, I would greatly appreciate it, and thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me.
District Seven?
Dr. Baker?
Assistant Chief, thank you for all you do, appreciate it.
All right, uh, for, for this last piece, because we are way over time, I'm going to ask, could we just talk about the user agreements along with the plans for the city anniversary in Juneteenth, which are also user-related agreements? Uh, could we just talk about all those, and can I give you three minutes? Can you get it done in three minutes?
Sure.
And we'll just take questions, thanks.
So we'll hop right into the user agreements. As it relates to the goal and objectives that is on the presentation, uh, this will assist us in our efforts to have new and innovative athletic and recreation opportunities based on community needs. Uh, given the history and the rapport that we've had with some of our associations, uh, we know we could not operate last year, and we started those conversations to make sure we were transparent and consistent with all of the youth associations that we associated with. So currently of the listed user agreements on here, we currently have two, being Grissom Baseball and Sandtown, that have went through the proper process and have gotten feedback from the city attorney's office, and are slated to be put before Mayor Council for approval. The additional is on here for Old National, uh, Little Peaches Kickball. Those are, and then there's also another one that we have, um, as it relates to another opportunity at Wilkes-Barre. Those are having conversations with, um, for example, with Mr. Davis over here, where having conversations with those association presidents to make sure that the verbiage within the agreement are correct. The next step will be to go to the city attorney's office in the same manner that the other ones have, and then be before Mayor Council. We're hopeful that we can have those all on this upcoming, uh, voting session as well. But currently, we have two that are ready to go as we speak, and three that are right there at the finish line, just waiting to get the final feedback from, from the end users being, uh, the association presidents in those, in those associations. So, those are the user agreements that we're looking at right now. Um, if there's any questions regarding those, I know we talked earlier about the model that we're using for those. Um, we will have the expectations in them to continue to go through the background checks. Uh, the funds generated from these agreements will go through our Civic Rec system, and we will have close communications with the associations to make sure that we're on the up and up as it relates to House Bill thirteen seventy-three, with that legislation, to make sure that if they are continuing to work with the city, that those considerations are taken into place as well.
Can you talk briefly about the city anniversary in Juneteenth?
Yes, uh, so as it relates to Juneteenth specifically, uh, we were under the impression we would be able to operate in a different manner, uh, having the funds allocated and having a vendor in mind. Uh, but we got with finance and we spoke with the city attorney's office, and they informed us that it would need to go through a formal process. So we have provided a scope of work to the finance department. Uh, we're gonna go with the fourteen-day turnaround advertisement with that RFP, and we're hopeful that we can get that slated and approved for Mayor Council to move forward with the idea that we're looking at with Juneteenth. Uh, the overall vision that we have with that is that we want to present to Mayor Council the idea of having a large festival, uh, we would like to have this hosted at the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Unfortunately, not the day of Juneteenth specifically, but that Saturday before, because we do have other city opportunities, um, specifically over at the Southwest Arts Center, that we will have other Juneteenth celebration opportunities. Uh, but we're looking at this family fun, uh, festival atmosphere, uh, having a lot of input from the community as far as talent, as far as vendors, uh, areas for the family and children to play. Uh, we're hoping that the vendor that we're able to secure can work cohesively with our internal departments, police department for safety, um, the fire department for, I mean, I'm sorry, the public works department to assist with trash, and, and to have a collaborative effort to provide that Juneteenth celebration, um, on June eighteenth.
All right, and the city anniversary?
So the city anniversary was going to be in the same vein, we were hopeful... Oh, you just said five, okay. Um, in the same vein, um, the anticipated idea was that if we had a successful vendor that was providing the efforts for Juneteenth, um, being that the budget is smaller for this event, that it would be on a smaller scale, that they could also provide that same thing for, uh, the city anniversary. But as the conversation took place with the, the finance department, those two efforts could not be combined, and because of that budget being smaller, there's other opportunities and ideas that we could generate for that. So there's gonna be a collaborative effort, uh, with the communications department to put that together. Unfortunately, we don't have a, a draft of anything at this moment, but there were preliminary conversations of, um, I think it was last year, where they had the, the city input, the, uh, community input, multiple DJs. Um, those were one of the ideas that I think that took place either last year or the year before. Um, taking some of those components and integrating it into a smaller-scale festival type to have a, an all-day celebration where the community can come out and celebrate the city fifth-year anniversary.
All right, and then last but not least, I do want to keep in mind that our city anniversary is less than sixty days away. But for yourself and the city manager, um, we also had outdoor graduations for the high school last year. That's coming up in about two months, three months. Uh, have any, have we talked to Fulton County or Fulton County schools about that?
Is that the GICC?
I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna say, we, we did research with the anticipation of that possibly being the desire, but from what on the, from research, it was discovered that they, I think, have secured, secured another venue to do their graduations rather than doing them at Wolf Creek.
All right, thank you. All right, District One?
Thank you for that update. Um, I, I would hope that with those events coming up, like you said, for the city anniversary in Juneteenth, maybe bringing something back to the, to the city council, ideally at our council meeting this month, just to be able to execute. And then I just had a general question about the user agreement. Have you received anything from, uh, the Lady Stallions or that falls under a different category in terms of user agreements?
Well, we have had conversations, they have reached out to us. Um, have we had any, I don't think we have anything in the works right now. We do have, within a kickball affiliation and, um, an agreement on the table that we're looking at right now, but not with the Stallions specifically.
Okay, um, just want to understand, because I know they're at Sandtown, so again, I don't know where all this is. I hope y'all have some kind of conversation at least, but thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, District Two?
Um, so, quick question, um, the RFP, so you are going to proceed with placing a RFP out in regards to Juneteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and do you know exactly when, or does the plan have to be in place? You've already developed a scope of work, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so when are you planning to release the RFP? Because we are, it's time-sensitive, did you say?
Oh, absolutely, it, it definitely is time-sensitive. So, we're hoping that it, well, the goal was to hope to have it released today. I can follow up with the purchasing, uh, manager to see what the status on that is. But a scope of work is in place, we do have some, uh, potential vendors that will provide him, to provide the information that they can entertain it and hopefully submit a proposal. But I can give you an update as to when that is advertised, if it's not already.
And it will probably be on the, um, I guess, advertised for like thirty days or something?
Because of the time-
You said fourteen?
Yes, ma'am, because of the time-sensitive nature of it, um, we will go with the, um, fourteen days, this, the minimum that I think we can do.
And because the budget is so small for the city anniversary, we don't need to proceed in that effort as well?
Correct, there are other ways that we can address that with it being a smaller budget. Um, unless we designate the majority of that funding line to one person, I think that they will still need some type of approval. But I think we can, um, operate and do that in other ways, uh, with it being a smaller amount.
Okay, all right, thank you.
District Three?
What's the budget for the city anniversary?
I thought it was fifty, but I think it's thirty thousand? Yes, thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand.
And what's the budget for Juneteenth?
Uh, one hundred and fifty thousand.
When is the mid-year budget?
Next month.
I just don't understand why we have a hundred and fifty, I mean, I want to celebrate both, but I, I, I just think our, uh, city anniversary, when we were established and founded, you know, is, is, is very important. And I would just hope that my colleagues will consider maybe allocating some of the money equitably between the two anniversaries, um, Juneteenth and the, uh, city anniversary. And then also, Ms. Sally Jones, um, once this RFP goes out on the street and we decide who's going to, uh, oversee the planning, can we have them bring, or Mr. Landrum bring the recommendation of the planning back to this council so that we can approve, um, whatever is going to be planned, and let staff handle the planning and execution? Um, you know, when elected officials get involved, um, some things, sometimes things can get a little messy. So, I would like for whoever is awarded this contract, they bring a plan to, uh, Ms., you and Mr. Landrum, and Mr. Landrum brings it to this council, and then we approve and proceed. And that's for both the anniversary and also the Juneteenth. And if we have ideas, then we need to forward that in a proper manner per the charter, you and, you and Mr. Landrum. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, District Four?
The only thing I would add is that, um, I've spoken to several residents before and since being here, and the issue of celebrating our city's anniversary, many residents feel as if, um, this government doesn't pay enough attention. So, I really want for, for us, as the governing body and staff, to really listen to citizens out there who are really feeling as if, you know, it's like the young people say, "We did a thing, but it's not celebrated." I really want us to pay very close attention to it, um, and just respect the wishes of, um, the citizens of the city. Um, I am, I, I don't know how the fundings or the reasoning between allocating fifty thousand towards Cityhood and a hundred and fifty to Juneteenth, right? Given it's the same block of people, you know, but, um, it's, it's, it's a little shocking to hear those differences. And we are, we are less than two months away from the anniversary. And Juneteenth is a little beyond that, yes, but it doesn't sound as if we are very far forward with any of the plans. And I'm not blaming any, anybody, I'm just saying, just let us be mindful that there's really talk out there about this, okay? And thank you for all, all you're doing, including the work that you're doing with me in District Four.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, District Five, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Uh, Mr. Landrum, I like the idea of our city celebration as we do turn five. So I do look forward to, uh, big, great events. And, uh, I want to do one thing, though, if we can bring the outlaw classic that we can, since we missed it, uh, in December, we can bring that back. And, uh, if this DS and the citizens, uh, wouldn't mind, I like your idea, Mr. Landrum, take May first and go all the way up till Juneteenth, and create like a carnival atmosphere for them to have something that's unique directly to this city. And fifty years from now, it'd be the best thing I think we could ever have done, besides getting water and our own sanitation, that's another story. I digress, thank you, sir.
District Six, Councilman Willis? Williams, I'm sorry, District Seven, Dr. Baker?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Landrum. I just have, uh, a comment to make about the disproportionate allocation of the funds for the city anniversary in Juneteenth. I don't know what constituents some of my colleagues are speaking with, but I know that the ones I speak with really were upset with us last year on how, after we passed historic legislation prior to the federal government to acknowledge Juneteenth, we did nothing. And then when there were attempts to do something, even through sponsorship, completely just sponsorship, it was just pushed to the side still. And I just don't understand it. Uh, I had an amazing conversation with our assistant city manager who contends that we should actually, Juneteenth should be to South Fulton what St. Patrick's Day is to Savannah. Since we still have the designation of being quote-unquote "the blackest city in America", we should have, of course, we should have, uh, uh, Wolf Creek Amphitheater by now. There's no reason we should be amplifying and making, we shouldn't be amplifying and making money and having Juneteenth be a revenue-generating festival that people from all over the country come to South Fulton to celebrate. I think it's easy to understand why there would be more money allocated to Juneteenth as opposed to our city's anniversary. It's almost like that's personal, where this is larger and something that can grow and become, in fact... I, I just, I just don't get it, and I think that at some point, at some point, we, as a council, have to, we have to just lead. We have to lead and not be afraid to lead. People are waiting on us to lead and do stuff that's different. I mean, we have that ability, and I just want to see it happen, and I'm not the only one. It's people who will eventually come up and let us know how they feel. Like, us celebrating the fact that we came together and the way we put on so often, many people think it's not allowed for us to celebrate. But Juneteenth is something that people in the blackest city in America should embrace, and it should be amplified. And I, I foresee as a visionary that it could be a large thing that we're creating, you know, revenue all throughout this city, and people are coming here and staying here, and it could be something that can grow with all of the sponsorship money that we can get, even if it's us moving the budget around, even if thirty is not enough for the city celebration, even if we add twenty thousand, like, outside of what we allocate for it, even if we're gonna start pulling money, which it sounds like we're gonna do, sponsorship will drive to this city based off of that allocation or that acknowledgement of who we are, uh, for, as long as we are able to have that designation, we should lean into it, and that's just my thoughts on it. Thank you for all that you're doing.
All right, thank you, thank you, everyone. It's eight-twenty, we are going to move. We do have, I believe, a couple of items for executive session, and I'm very passionate about getting us out by nine o'clock. Um, I do just want to, uh, close this section out and echo, uh, some of the, uh, comments from Dr. Baker to just, to just say that, um, Juneteenth is a national holiday, and I want us to con- and I want us to consider this not just as like, this is what I care about versus what other people care about, but in terms of economic development. Here in metro Atlanta, we now have the largest Juneteenth celebration in the nation. Our Juneteenth, Atlantis Juneteenth Parade, in which they've asked for all of the surrounding cities to attend, will be televised. So, Juneteenth is now becoming a televised national event, which means that inasmuch as we participate and support it, we can get national coverage for our brand-new city. One idea that I would like to throw out is there are a lot of avid cyclists in our city. We have a beautiful city. We may not have a lot of facilities that are built out, but we just have beautiful natural scenery. We might want to think about a tour de South Fulton for Juneteenth, where we just do a thirty-five or fifty-mile ride around South Fulton. Fifty miles is not a very long time if you're an avid cyclist. We might be able to come up with a modest prize. And if we were able to get that televised anywhere, it would also show off the beauty of all seven districts of our city. It could be a low-cost Juneteenth thing. But I do just want us to think about that in terms of economic development. And with that, Mr. Clerk, I think we're at the end of our meeting. You want to just sound the-
Mr. Mayor, I-
Last item.
I also speak again. There was a lot said.
I, I, I do understand that we've had every district speak. So, if we do it again, we're just going to go through every district speak again.
Go down, go down the line again, if that's what we're doing.
But it's eight twenty-two.
If, if you want to go down the line again, Mr.-
I would, I would like to actually move on. We, we, there are people that have been waiting for four hours to do public comment. I'm not sure any of them are even left. But if there are people here, there's one or two, I would like to get that public comment and then go to our executive session.
I think that you should let, we're supposed to-
Are you, are, are you making a point of order or a point of information?
I move that we overrule the decision of the chair to allow-
So, you're making a motion to appeal the decision of the chair?
Yes, I am.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Roll call vote to appeal the decision of the chair. Councilmember Rawl.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves? Mayor, Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Nay.
That item is approved, six to one.
Alright, district one?
Again, I thought this was to address his ability to talk. I thought-
We're gonna, we're, we're going to go through, we're going to allow everyone because I don't, I don't want anyone to say that they wanted to speak a second time and they didn't get a chance. So, this is why we go down the aisle. District one, do you have any further comments?
No, I just wanted Councilman J.C. Sebastian to be able to express himself.
District two, do you have any further comments?
No, I do not.
District three, do you have any further comments?
All I can say is that this is not a competition. The anniversary and Juneteenth is not a competition. You know, it's very disrespectful to the people who work hard and, and who fought off Atlanta, who fought off people who didn't want us to become a city, who fought through the General Assembly. You know, J.C. was standing right there with me. And the entire five years, this was no easy feat. We have never properly celebrated our establishment. It was the pandemic, it was one thing after another. And so, yes, people are upset because the people, the founding fathers of the city have never been recognized and they have not been celebrated. And so, I'm not competing with Juneteenth. I just want us to be equitable, and I want us to listen to residents as Councilmember Sebastian said. Thank you.
District four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I honestly, I feel a little bit insulted by some of the comments because, again, it's, it's not a competition. As a matter of fact, I, I believe if, if I am, if I'm remembering correctly that when Fulton County sponsored the resolution to make Juneteenth a holiday, that I was there as chief of staff in district six, and we worked on that resolution based on what happened in the city of South Fulton. So, we took what was done here and made it countywide. So, it's, it's never a competition between Juneteenth and the Cityhood Movement. It is that we have never celebrated the accomplishment. Here's, here's one thing that is, here's one thing that is basic when it comes to saying, "We celebrate Juneteenth because we're the blackest city in America." Without the Cityhood Movement, there would be no blackest city in America. That's just the bottom line. So, just let us stop the games and try to figure that we're competing with each other. That's not it. We are saying, "Let's celebrate both things." It's not either or. If we're going to put enough money into Juneteenth, let us make sure we put enough money into the Cityhood Movement. And let's make sure we really seriously try to put together a good celebration, especially in the year five. Because, again, we are sixty, we are less than sixty days, if I'm counting correctly, away. And I'm just still hearing that we don't have an actual plan together yet. And quite frankly, it's, it's a little bit insulting. That's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
District five?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Thank you to all my colleagues. I just love this great celebration when we turn five. But I do believe, I believe in both to the core. As May first, well, April showers, May flowers. What better way to bring in things that celebrate something that's unique to this city, to our DNA? And then we can wrap it up with Juneteenth, something that's unique to this city and the majority of the people who live in it. But Juneteenth is also, it's our culture, but it's also inclusive of everybody because it is love. And, you know, from May first, then you got Mother's Day in between, and then you have Memorial Day, and then you have Juneteenth and wrapping up with Father's Day, we got five events. We can make it a carnival. J.C., I think you know, you might have experienced in that, you know, us, because I've traveled a few places. I'm just saying, that was Mr. Landrum's idea, by the way. So, it's, I think that we can make something happen with that, incorporate it both. I think so. I would love that, but we do turn five, and I do want it to be big.
District six?
Nothing, thank you.
District seven?
Mr. Mayor, I'm scared if I say something, you're going to have to do another round. Because it seems like that's how we give it up in the city of South Fulton. It's almost like every time, like, I gotta beat you. It's, this is so asinine. It's asinine. And it's like, pray for us, pray for our city. And I, I mean, nobody said anything about, nobody put them against each other. We said, "We don't want to pull the budgets apart, we just want to acknowledge what we are." And I don't know what everybody hears just because it's not exactly what they said, but hit dogs holler sometime. And I just think that if this is how every meeting is going to go, just pray for the city of South Fulton.
Mr. Clerk? Thank you, everyone. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The last item is public comment. Mr. Mayor and Councilman, we did receive twenty-two public comment. I believe nine persons wanted to provide comment in person. With your pleasure, can I proceed?
I'm actually going, I'm, I'm actually going to start with the council, the former council people that are here, just in protocol. I believe Mr. Arrington was supposed to be here as well, but Councilwoman Jackson?
Good evening, and thank you guys for coming to Burdette Park, District Five. My name is Rosie Jackson, and I live at forty-three sixty-five Melanie Drive, and I am in District Five. My comment today is in reference to amending the Airbnb ordinance to stop rooming houses that are in our district, and they're acting out illegally. They're being board, they're boarding houses. They're using the Airbnb, Airbnb legislation, your ordinance, they're using it illegally. And it needs to be immediately enacted and enforced. It's causing a public nuisance, increasing crime, and depreciating property values in our district. This was brought to the attention of Attorney Hyman by Councilwoman Giliard in September, and to our councilperson, we had a meeting with Councilman Cory Reeves. Still, nothing has been done. And what do we need to do to get some attention in our district? Because we have six boarding houses just in our subdivision, and we're basically seniors. You know, and you got all these people trans, transit, transiting, going in and out of these houses. People paying rent this week, and you got somebody moving in the next week. It's, it's ridiculous. I stopped this past Saturday because you had a couple going to a car. I went and knocked on the door to tell the lady, "Somebody's out here going in your car." She said, "No, I rent cars from here. This is in a boarding house." I mean, you got a lot going on in District Five that we need to, we, we need to pay attention to. And I've asked you about getting these boarding houses out. You said you talked to Mr. Hyman. I know Councilwoman Willis talked, not Willis, Giliard spoke to him in September. Nothing has been done. All you have to do is tweak the Airbnb ordinance to include this. Thank you, I'm sorry, whatever, but please do something.
Mayor, may I take a-
Uh, we're going to go through these comments, is that's okay?
Can they be sent to us?
Well, the people, the people that have, can we just announce the people that are, that are here that have waited? And we can, we can hear the rest that have been written out.
Going through, if you hear your name, please come to the microphone. You have two minutes to make your public comment. Rashard Snellings. Marqueta Price. Pamela Harris. Joyce Jones. Sherri Phillips. Good evening, Ms. Phillips. Please state your name, address, and district, and you'll have two minutes to make your comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran. Okay, how y'all doing? I'm Sherri Phillips. I am in District Six. I am sixty thirty-eight Oak Ban Court, right over there behind Walgreens off of Old National. Um, I came because this is my first time ever coming to an in-person meeting. I actually moved to the city of Atlanta in twenty seventeen, like, literally, probably two weeks right before y'all came an official city. I moved over here in twenty twenty, and I just really wanted to see who the city is ran by and how it runs. And I wanted to see the inner workings of what it is that I watch on YouTube. Because I watch all of them on YouTube, like, hey, my YouTube people, I'm Ms. Phillips in there. But I watch everything on here, and I try to attend as much as I can because I really want to learn more about the people that lead the city. One thing that you just said is eventually the leaders have to lead. And I try to hold everybody as accountable as I can to that, and I, I'm also held accountable all the time with anything in the city of South Fulton. So, I want to create a mutual understanding in doing that. With that being said, I'm learning more and more, and I read every ordinance. I've emailed everybody at this point. If y'all never met me, I'm Sherri. You'll probably see my name in your emails as well sooner than later. I want to understand more about the businesses here because as much as I think that it's very well thought out, I know that y'all spend many hours in these meetings. One thing that you said, which I a hundred percent agree with, is that it's just a lot of plans being presented to y'all continuously. But I think that you all are making the best decision according to the information that you have, according to the resources that you have. I want to know, are y'all actually walking these things as you put them in place? Does that make sense? Are there any entrepreneurs who sit on the board who have had to brick and mortar the things that you all are trying to put in place for the people you're asking to follow those steps? Have you done anything, or is there a guinea pig that you've used to create this landscape? Is there, as much research as you've done, is there anybody who's actually walked it to make sure that it works and it's efficient? Because that is a consistent thing that I face all the time and having difficulty getting answers. I know previously in the last meeting, Councilman Willis, you spoke about not wanting to allow off days because it's such a backlog, and that's one of the biggest complaints that you get. And I'm one of the people who be in that complaint list. So, I understand and I appreciate that. But I wanted to know, like, are there performance standards for us to alleviate that backlog?
Ms. Phillips, I'm sorry, that's your time.
I know, I just need to know this stuff. Because as a person who lives in the area, who wants to work in the area, entrepreneur in the area, we have a lot of unanswered questions. There's no flow chart, there's no way to navigate stages and say, "If this is your industry, it takes this, that, and the third" to get that business. We need to know because we're paying for it, but we don't see it.
We, we, we got it, Ms. Phillips.
Can, can I just say something, Ms. Phillips?
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to ask if you would please email me because I believe that you're actually in my district.
Yeah, I live in your district.
So, if you will please email me and let's set up a time for you and I to talk.
Absolutely.
Alright, go ahead.
I saw Commissioner Marvin Danterton come in. Did you want to hold him or just continue?
We'll, we'll hold him to the very end because I think it's going to be important. We're almost done, go ahead.
Okay, Drew Deman. Yofi Dowell. Welcome, Mr. Dowell, you'll have two minutes. Please state your name, address, and district.
And while Mr. Dowell comes, Ms. Phillips, please also get with one of our staff members and let us know where you got that amazing shirt.
My name is Yofi Dowell. I live at one three four three Blairwood Court, that's District One. My public comment is about words versus actions. In the time since the runoff ended, the citizens of the city of South Fulton have had the opportunity to win its actions and words that have been amazing and awe-inspiring as well as terribly, terribly petty and unsettling, to say the least. The words "weak mayor" and "city council slash city manager centric form of government" is terribly unsettling to consider as options for citizens of the city of South Fulton. I say this because that statement is contingent upon a reality that does not exist. During the meeting, we heard some concept about adding a referendum to the ballot. And so, I put, I would like to say, put the concept to a vote rather than continue to exclude the constituency from the process. Thousands of people voted on two separate occasions for a mayor they felt would focus on the concerns of the citizens rather than personal agendas. Therefore, it is safe to assume a vote on the binary options of governance for our city was swaying the direction of the current mayor because of the desire for the concerns of the citizens as opposed to personal agendas. Every effort to act by our current mayor is dead on arrival. I heard a council member in the district that two of my aunties live in say she would not sacrifice time she could spend with her family to attend an event that was designed for citizens and their representatives to attend. Personal agendas prevent concerned citizens extra opportunities to engage with their elected representatives. This is not about our mayor, Khalid Kamau. As professionals that have been elected to be representatives, stop focusing your personal agendas on the current mayor and focus on all constituents, constituency within the city of South Fulton and its seven districts. This has to be recognized by the citizens of the city of South Fulton. Do you want words or actions? Entrepreneurs are interested in doing business in the city of South Fulton. So, do you want to be caught up in personal agendas or provide goods and services to the citizens of the city of South Fulton? Citizens of the city of South Fulton, listen to the words of your district representatives and your mayor, but pay close attention to their actions.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell, thank you.
Harold Head. Good evening, Mr. Head, you have two minutes. Please state your name, address, and district.
Yes, my name is Harold Head. I reside in District One, forty-nine years here in the area. A lot of the questions that I had were answered, so I want to thank the, the mayor and the city council. You have provided a lot of the information. I just wanted to make a few requests for our senior citizens. If we could please maybe create a senior advocate position to have one, someone who can advocate for the seniors in our city. As a certified recreation professional and a certified youth sports administrator, I would like to thank what you have done and would like to know if in the future, the swimming pools and the swimming areas that you have spoken about, as a aquatic program manager for Sister City, we have four natatoriums and twelve outdoor facilities. So, I would love to advocate for that inside the city of South Fulton. And also looking at Skyline and the people who are adding the park. We know that Mr. Hamilton Holmes Jr., him and his sister, they swam on the swim team in Atlanta when they were young. So, I would like to advocate providing this. So, I would like to thank our representatives from one, two, and three who have definitely advocated for these pools, and thank you.
Next is Cory Krytel. Cory Krytel, and Gwen Foster, Foster. Mr. Mayor and Council, that completes the, the list that I have.
Alright, thank you. And now, we will take comments from council, and then we'll head into executive session. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, we do have one more commenter. Uh, Commissioner Marvin Arrington is here and uh, I know he wanted to make some remarks regarding Wolf Creek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, our counsel, uh, for your service for the citizens of South Fulton. Uh, just wanted to come and speak with you and let you know uh, that we are working towards uh, transitioning, uh, I guess, uh, the Wolf Creek Amphitheater. Um, I have to be careful, I was told, uh, because of uh, what was said in executive session. Uh, cannot be repeated, but what I will say is that the county is committed to an immediate turnover of operations. Uh, there are some technical issues that prov- are preventing uh, the full and final transfer. Uh, but those issues are trying to be resolved now and uh, I think that we'll uh, have that uh, and some other good things like sidewalks for uh, the Wolf Creek Library, uh, at the least, starting out. I know we've already gotten the trees done. Uh, they were down over in District One, working with uh, Councilwoman Roel on that, so. Um, thank you again for your service, uh, and uh, from the county standpoint, we are happy to continue to work with you. Uh, we do get pushback from the northern commissioners uh, about what the northern cities didn't get. Uh, and you know, what South Fulton is getting, so uh, we hear it on both sides because you know, what I hear from residents in South Fulton is, hey, they got all this stuff on the north side. We want to make sure we get our fair share. And so uh, that's one of the reasons I'm there to make sure that we get our fair share. Uh, also, we will have plans for a senior center uh, coming to South Fulton, city of South Fulton, which is the largest uh, city uh, in, in the southern portion at least, uh, outside of Atlanta. And uh, also with the recreation, I wanted to say, you know, please keep me involved. I'm also a member of the uh, Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority and we have different monies and grants. We've given money to San Town uh, and to Welcome All in the past. So if there are specific projects, uh, it may not be a lot of money, but there may be specific opportunities or projects where we can use the Atlanta Fulton County Recreation Authority to help or supplement some of your recreational uh, ideas, so thank you.
All right, Mr. Arrington, please don't leave without seeing our Parks Director, Mr. Landrum. All right, we're gonna ask you to just stick around for a few more minutes. Uh, please see Mr. Landrum and we're going to just get some closing comments before we head into executive session. So District One, Dr. Dowell.
I want to thank uh, you Commissioner Arrington, um, Khadija, Rockman's staff, as well as Commissioner Pitts for responding to the issues at Trama Crowe Park. I appreciate uh, one, you coming out to take a look and us being able to get it cleaned up for those residents who live on Elba Drive. Um, so thank you. Um, I also wanted to now, announce that the Southeast Truxler Park and Land who have been aggressively working on a Hamilton Nature Preserve uh, will be having a couple um, community build days. We had a very successful one this past Saturday and they're working feverishly to be able to open for Earth Day. We're very excited. We had the first five miles of trails um, developed and it's just been a wonderful project in terms of a lot of South Fulton residents coming out to participate. Finally, we have an Earth Day Community Mural Project in partnership with the Lady Stallions and the City of South Fulton Professional Pearls on April twenty-third at San Town Park, working with our Arts and Cultural Affairs staff, so you'll be hearing more about that. And finally, on Monday, March fourteenth, from six to seven-thirty, I have my um, quarterly District One Town Hall Meeting via Zoom and I look forward to giving you more updates. Thank you.
Thank you, District Two, Councilwoman Gumps.
All right, so thank you, Commissioner Arrington, for being here tonight and um, your advocacy, advocacy in regards to Wolf Creek. Also too, um, you failed to mention about the uh, lighting in the call boxes on the Wolf Creek Trail. So I, I make, I want to make sure that, you know, you recognize for that and we are looking forward to our sidewalk, so thank you for being here. Um, also, of course, uh, this March is a special month because it's also Black uh, Women's, Black Business Month. It's also Women's History Month and today is Women's International Day, so uh, shout out to all my women out there. Um, but just, you know, this young lady who I think is my sororum, um, wanted to share that um, we are definitely concerned about businesses here. Um, one of the things, especially for Women's Month, what we're working on and towards the end of the month is having um, a symposium to where we're gonna have, bring women in the room uh, to talk about business, women in technology, women in business, all of that. So we will, so if you look out for that, that'll be very soon. Um, also thinking about creating a think tank um, for women and business owners in the city of South Fulton and kind of tell us what they need, um, how to help us, you know, improve business relations across the entire city, so look out for that as well. Um, wanted to talk to um, my former colleague, uh, Ms. Councilwoman Rosie Jackson. Um, that has definitely been an issue um, in regards to the Airbnb. I will definitely commit to working with Councilmember Reeves and the rest of the council in regards to that. I do know with the uh, Turo cars, I think this is a new thing that's, I'm actually coming out. We have addressed some of those issues where um, people are actually renting them out and they're leaving them at the clubhouse and things of that nature, but uh, the code enforcement has been addressing that, so if you- Well, as far as for the Turo, yes, they can. For Turo, they can because he will come out and cite. Um, so they will also investigate and look at the websites and things of that nature. So I will connect you as well um, with our code enforcement in regards to the Turo. We're gonna work with uh, Attorney Hyman in regards to the Airbnb. And lastly, I do want to thank everyone that attended um, our summer, well, springing forward, uh, virtual chat series. Uh, in regards to code enforcement and PD, we will be bringing another series available as well. Kind of making sure everybody gets an update on parks and things of that nature. And I think that is it. So again, did I cover everything? I think I covered everything, but this was a great meeting and again, um, thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you. District Three, Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you all for being here tonight and um, thank you, former Councilwoman, um, Rosie Jackson, for bringing that issue to the forefront. I have that same issue in my district. It is a problem and we need to go ahead and rectify it so it won't get out of control. It's almost out of control. And um, if you can, let Councilmember Reeves know where those houses are, uh, so we can get on it right away. Um, I would like to also congratulate our Swordfish team. I am super proud, especially with the pandemic that has been um, upon us for two years and with the pool being out of commission. Um, they have overcome all of the challenges and they are now going to compete in the national championship. Um, look, South Fulton, South Fulton has something to say and um, we need to do everything in our power to make sure we bring our Sword, our Swordfish team back home and um, and support them. And I hope when we do celebrate our um, anniversary, that we center it around these, these uh, young men and women swimmers from our city. We need to do something very special for them and they need to feel that we are proud of them. Um, there is a modern day slavery epidemic going on and it's called human sex trafficking. And how we're gonna combat that is we gotta become more educated about it. So I have been relentlessly uh, semi-annually um, hosting human uh, sex trafficking ambassador program training classes and we have one coming up March twenty-ninth at six PM. It is virtual. It is in partnership with Delta Sigma Theta East Point Chapter. No, I'm sorry, the Atlanta Alumni Chapter and then um, Youth Sparks. So please, please go out and register. Lastly, um, there is a Peacemaker Roundtable Event at Siloam Church um, Wednesday, March sixteen, ten AM, uh, with Pastor Jonathan Carter and Keith Meadows. So make sure that you register and plan to attend that event. And I'm gonna end with this. I'm gonna say his name and his name is Johnny Talbert. Johnny Talbert was a twelve-year-old that died in twenty sixteen on Welcome All Park Field. Johnny Talbert was at a football practice and he passed out. And we did not have proper training in place to cool his body down. So when he was rushed to the hospital, his body temperature was a hundred and three degrees. Johnny died. And for the past three years, Representative William Bodie, Attorney Maui Davis, and Attorney Spencer and his mother have been fighting through the General Assembly to try to get a bill passed to mandate that throughout the state of Georgia, that youth have, youth uh, coaches have mandated training on how to deal with heat injuries and we have tubs at our facilities. So if this were to ever happen again, we can cool the bodies down. This is a preventable inju-, this is a preventable death if we can cool bodies down fast enough. And um, I testified on yesterday and I'm going to testify again because the bill did advance. I'm asking everybody who is here and everybody who hears me virtually, please email the state legislators and ask them to stop playing games. It's a simple ask. We just want them to mandate that people have training to deal with heat injuries and that they require that tubs be at, ice tubs be at the facilities so that if it is a heat injury, they will be able to address it and prevent future deaths. So please, write your legislators, get behind uh, Bodie, uh, Rep. Bodie and don't let Johnny's death and other um, individuals who have died from heat injuries death be in vain. And I will be submitting this and I sent the legislation over to you, um, Attorney Hyman. I will be submitting it locally so we can pass this in the city of South Fulton and working with other cities to make sure we do it throughout Metro Atlanta and to the state, get it together. These tubs only cost like two hundred and something dollars and they're playing games and it's a preventable death. We, it's a lot of things we are known for in Georgia, but we don't need to be known for our kids dying of preventable heat-related injuries. We have one of the highest death rates with this injury in the nation and it's preventable. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, District Four, Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Commissioner Arrington, thank you for being here. Um, thank you for the update. Looking forward to talking to you a little bit more inside of our executive session. I just wanted to thank the folks of District Four who braved the rain last night to come out and um, to my first town hall. Just want to thank the staff again for the role that um, they played in helping me to execute that first town hall. Um, it wasn't perfect, but we are working towards um, improving it. Uh, we headed to Arlington Christian School and while I'm in Arlington Christian School, just want to congratulate them on winning the basketball double A, um, state championships, both boys and girls in those categories, so I'm looking forward to celebrating with them um, even as they're postponing their activities uh, that were planned for this week. And uh, Councilwoman Gump, I was gonna put in my final comments, congratulations and happy International Women's Day and Women's Month. But to the women of this council and the women of the Cityhood Movement, starting with State Senator Don Zella James, Representatives Bazemore, Representative Mandeisha Thomas, Councilwomen Giliard, Jackson, Warrell Gumps, Willis Williams, Sisters Camilla Moore, Demeter Chapman, Sister Sebastian, Sister Mustella, and other women who fought to create the city. Happy International Women's Day and Happy Women's Month. And that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, District Five, Mayor Pro Tem Reeves.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. Uh, and uh, it is also National Reading Month and so if anybody has books that they want to donate, you could donate it here. Uh, Welcome All and at every fire station in the city of, of South Fulton. Thank you, Chief Jones, for allowing that to happen as um, and any of my menfolk who want to join me on Fridays, reading to the kids. I do this each and every Friday uh, at Heritage and Fairwood Elementary. Just shoot us an email. We'd love to have you. We meet up at the library. Also too, I do a connect with Councilman Reeves every Monday night, rain, sleet, hail or snow. We're gonna be mic'd up and ready to go, six thirty to seven thirty, every Monday night that we have just now launched a hybrid version. So we will be right here, live in the community room, but still offering the Zoom option. Um, so you uh, please join us. And to the ladies, God's greatest creation on this planet earth. And so, happy Women's History Month and I am so glad you're here, uh, Councilwoman Rosie Jackson as you are history maker to this city and you deserve to be recognized for that for Women's History Month because you are a woman of history because you are the first woman from the fifth district to represent us and I want to honor you for that and I'll get with you to see how we can do that. And uh, to my ladies on this DS and this council international, Sister Carmela Lee Gump, she always gets to the heart of the matter and we appreciate her for your women's group and you know, as we say in the church, women folk gonna deal with women folk. Y'all create your leadership group. We gonna have a semastamine group. And uh, for our menfolk over here, and Brother Arrington, I will be talking to you because this gym you just inherited, sir. As you are now, this is now in your district, so we'll be talking. Thank you all.
District Six, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Commissioner Arrington, for coming this evening and providing the update for Wolf Creek. I know, or at least I hope, I won't say I know, but I hope that that will um, help to quell some of the um, conversation that is happening out among the residents about what, what is taking so long for us to get Wolf Creek. So thank you for that. I do appreciate it. Um, and that's it.
All right, I'm going to give the last word for the evening to uh, Dr. Baker, so I'm gonna go first uh, and just say a couple of quick things. First off, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight uh, that came in person. There was like a hundred people watching online. We have one of the most lit Youtubes of uh, all local politics, so thank you for everyone watching online. Uh, we will be here on second Tuesdays, here on the south side at Birdette Gym and we will be uh, at the Southwest Art Center on fourth Tuesdays. So uh, you, thank you for those of who came from the north side to the south side tonight. We'll be on the north side um, on, on the fourth Tuesday. Thank you for just seeing all of this beautiful city that we have. Um, seconding, happy, uh, Happy Women's History Month and congratulations to the South Fulton Swordfish who are headed to the Nationals in Iowa. Our department, well, there are a couple of department heads that are still here, but our uh, our Parks Department is still here. If you got more conversation with Parks, uh, please let them know. We have some maps. That's where Mr. Sharp and I were coming from today. Uh, the, as you've heard, the county commission districts have changed. Our state house districts have changed and we are also looking at proposed changes for our city council districts. So all of those maps are on the table in the back and they will be in the lobby. We'll have them in the lobby at every uh, council meeting, so we'll make sure that uh, all, all of the council members, we'll get them, to put them in their newsletters and we'll distribute them digitally. But if you want to come and just touch the maps and see them in person, we encourage you to please keep coming out to our in-person council meetings. We're gonna keep this conversation about parks going. We have a town hall at Kingdom of God Church tomorrow night. It is right across the street from Welcome All Park. We'll be there at seven PM. And we're gonna keep the conversation going tonight. I am launching a new initiative. It is called uh, the Tuesday Night Turnup with yours truly, the mayor. We are- We are going to visit a different night spot in this beautiful city every second Tuesday. We'll have a little bit more discussion about what we're talking about here, and then we'll do whatever we're doing, we'll do whatever they do at that night spot. So this Tuesday is going to be our first one. We're going to be at the Daiquiri Factory on O-National, which is right around the corner. It is karaoke night, so yours truly will be doing karaoke. We're hoping that Dr. Baker will come and do a little karaoke as well. He's got little vocals he doesn't tell people about. And hopefully, some other members of council and staff, please come out and do karaoke with us. And lastly, Mayor Mondays. Every Monday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, you can come and make an appointment, get your 20 minutes to a half hour with the mayor, and we will follow up with our colleagues and our staff members to get all of your requests answered. So if you didn't get to speak tonight, if you're watching online, you can just go to that Mayor Mondays tab on any of the city's channels or ColleagueCares.com. As always, you can text the word Fulton, F-U-L-T-O-N, to 33777 to sign up for the newsletter and mobile alerts for meetings like these. Thank you all so much. It is 9:02, so we are getting most of you home. We're going to stay back for a little bit longer, but thank you all so much for coming. And with that, I'm going to give the last word to Dr. Mark Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I won't be singing at karaoke night. Real quick, I just wanted to say, at the next meeting, well, actually, everybody is pretty much knows, and I've never said it from up here, but this will be my last council meeting, is I am going to be vacating my seat to run for United States Congress in District 13 this week. But it's very important because there's a large undertaking at the very next council meeting that I just want to impress upon everyone in the city to support, as well as my members of council, regarding the legislation to pardon less than an ounce of marijuana summons. This could be historic. I've been speaking with people in the community. They're very, very excited about it. I was on with Rashad Ritchie, the real estate man in radio, talking about it towards the end of last week. I had an extremely long and challenging conversation, but I believe we kind of broke some ground with our police chief. This is something that we need to discuss and we need to talk about, and I just look forward to the conversation continuing in this body, being bold and actually leading because we have the opportunity to do so. And with that being said, I believe March 21st, March 21st at Enon, at the library on Enon, Wolf Creek Library, we'll be having a discussion with Rashad Ritchie, hopefully Mayor Ted, I'm still waiting to hear back, not Mayor, but Commissioner Ted, Marvin Arrington, our commissioner, as well as Rashad Ritchie, the cannabis medic and possibly even Killer Mike. But we're just trying to get the public to come out and actually voice how they feel about us moving forward and not making Georgia last when it comes to the legalization process of cannabis that's happening and sweeping over our nation right now with over 18 states and over 38, you know, when it comes to medical. And I'm just proud to have that conversation. But again, I just want to challenge our council and our constituents, our staffs, and everyone here to be bold and know that we're capable of leading. That's why we're here. I just want to say that people are watching, and this is to my council, my colleagues that I love. It's been a pleasure to serve here for nearly five years, and people are watching, both sides, and they're tired of us. They're tired of us nudging just to get the lick back. And I think we have to just move forward as adults, as leaders, as people who they know we are and do the job that they know that they've entrusted us to do. And I know that everybody up here is capable, and they love this city just as much as I do. Some would even argue more. But I know the sacrifices that I've made for this city. I know that I've been broke for the past five years as well. And I just think that everybody that's up here loves this city, and we know who put us here, and we have to just stop trying to get our licks back. And it's like, I'm thinking, and being in African-American studies, I always find out certain things about our culture and our people that little is known about, like W.E.B. Du Bois and Marcus Garvey, who both talked about our petty differences and how we have to let our petty differences go when it comes to our people. And many don't know that W.E.B. Du Bois died in Ghana because he left and gave up on us to a certain extent. Actually, he left, moved America, and died in Ghana because he gave up on us. But I'm hopeful, and I'm encouraged because the very next day, history notes that Martin Luther King gave the infamous "I have a dream" speech, the same night that Du Bois died. One of our best thought leaders in that century passed away the same evening Martin Luther King had that dream and delivered that speech. So I'm hopeful in South Fulton. And I just leave you with the words of the greatest song that was ever written, if you ask me, by Stevie Wonder, and it's "As." Y'all remember that song, Counsel? Anybody know "As"? It's like the song where he's talking about he's been loving you till the day that eight times eight times eight is four, until the parrots fly, the...
Dolphins.
Dolphins fly, parrots live in sea. It's a whole lot of things that are inconquerable, that are impossible pretty much, but he talks about the love. But at the end of the song, he gets angry with it, and he starts singing something that I never knew, as I used to ride in the backseat of my mom's car when she played this. He said, "Y'all know, jump down and turn and jump down." Y'all familiar with that part?
Yeah, yeah. The city of South Fulton doesn't own race.
But I guess my point of it is, I had to go back and learn the words as I got older, and I want to share the words with you. He says, "We all know sometime life's hates and troubles can make you wish you were born in another time and place. But you can bet your life times that and twice that doubled, that God know exactly where he wanted you to be placed. So make sure when you say you're in it, but not of it, you're not helping to make this place called Earth a place sometime called Hell. Change your words and the truth, and then change that truth and the love, and maybe our children, grandchildren, or their great-grandchildren will tell. Thank you, and I love you. Love you, District Seven. I love you, City of South Fulton."
And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into Executive Session. Or adjourn.
I'm moved to go into Executive Session for real estate, personnel, and litigation.
So. Roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember Gumps.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Aye.
We are recessed at 9:09 for Executive Session.